The virtual meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheila, roll call, please.
Certainly. Tim Odiker?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
John Mazurkovich? Sheila Murphy, here. Wheeling Pangal?
Here.
Courtney Stegman?
Here.
Brandon McQueen?
Here.
Thank you, Sheila. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There is something that I'm just going to highlight, but we'll talk a little bit about it when we get down there. That is item number 10A. A lot has happened in the past five days. And so I'm just going to use that time to talk about why we are where we are and kind of what's going on. Instead of the actual resolution, which we will not have to do because of everything that's happened in the past five days. Is there any other things that we need to add for the agenda? Not hearing anything. We will go on to the next item, which is a student representative. And Lauren, I think I saw you. There you are. Welcome.
Hello. Hopefully, there's not too much background noise. I'd like to first start off by formally announcing our homecoming court. So for the class of 2024 is Avery Benjamin and McCoy Huby. The class of 2023 is Aubrey Garcia and Quinton Paschne. Class of 2022 is Christina Rafino and Logan Loia. Class of 2021 is Bennett Cox and Alena Wheeler, Luca Fornari and Lauren Rup, Owen Faust and Anna Claire Miller, James Hoyt and Iris Wang, and Ashton Lindo, Irina and Jera. Congratulations to all of you. And last Saturday, court walked at the halftime at the football game. And October 30th is our first playoff game. So good luck to you guys. And hopefully, we'll be at home. We're not sure yet, but. And then that morning of the 30th, there will be a virtual assembly where cheer and the dance team will perform. And our coaches, our fall coaches will speak. And our court will be live on the football field. And this will be streamed on Facebook Live. Thanks to Mr. Anstott. So and then for our spirit week for that week, which is the 26th through the 30th, the Monday is me Monday. Tuesday is time period Tuesday. Wednesday is pajama day. And Thursday is color wars. So for our freshmen, they are yellow. Our sophomore are blue. Juniors are white and seniors are black. So we are so happy to be able to have a homecoming this year, especially with all the circumstances. So we are making do with what we can. So that is all I have to report for today.
Thank you, Lauren. Does anyone have any questions for Lauren and homecoming? Thank you very much, Lauren. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Jen?
Good evening, everyone. The first item under my report is really part of Ginger's report. But this evening, we have with us again Jamie Rivette from Yo and Yo. And Jamie is here to provide the information on our audit. So Jamie, thank you for joining us this evening. And I am going to share my screen and pull up your PowerPoint.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much for inviting me to your virtual meeting tonight. I'm actually at another district sitting in their library as I have a live presentation that I've got to wear a mask coming up right after this. So thanks for working with me and fit me into your schedule. So we're going to go over the highlights from the audit. If you want to go to the next page, please. It does talk about the unmodified opinion. So every district in the state of Michigan is required by MDE to have an independent audit done by an independent CPA. And the reason for this is we want to make sure that they are remaining skeptical and not have any interactions with the district. So that is the reason for the rule of being an independent CPA and making sure that we're following the rules and reporting on those as such. And it really is management's responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the rules that we're required to follow, which are called the generally accepted accounting principles. And then as your auditors, what happens is my team and I come in, we audit that information provided, and then we express an opinion on it. And you were issued an unmodified opinion, which as it states here is the highest level of assurance offered. And it means there are no material modifications that need to be done. On the next slide, we have a snapshot of your balance sheet. So this is again as of June 30th, 2020. And we're required to report these specific columns required by generally accepted accounting principles as well as MDE. So your major funds are your general fund, which is your operating fund. And then this year, we had your 2020 capital projects fund fell into the category of a major fund. As you'll see on the next page, we did get those bond proceeds this year, which were pretty significant. So a couple of items to point out here is we do have assets in your general fund of about 12.7 million. And that is really made up of cash and cash equivalents with a large portion of those assets also being the receivable from your July and August state aid, which we classify as due from other governments. We also have some federal grant dollars included in that as well as the Saginaw Chippewa Indian tribe. Some of those receivables are included in there. And your liabilities for the general fund were a little over 5.3 million, which brought the fund balance for the year to 7.3 million, almost 7.4 million. Now, looking at your capital projects fund, as I stated, this is a new fund for the year. We had assets at the end of June of a little over 3.7 million. And that was all related to cash and cash equivalents for the year. We had a little bit of liabilities, which were the accounts payable. And the fund balance at the end of the year was the 3.2 million. Now, the third column, which are your non-major governmental funds. So those are all the other funds of the district. Those include your food service, your self-sustaining sports, the bookstore, community service. We have a new fund this year that's included in there, which is the student slash school activity fund. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. And then also your capital projects funds and your debt service funds are also included in that third column. On the next slide, we have the same funds that we had shown on the balance sheet. But now we're talking about the revenue and expenditures and then the changes in the fund balance for the year. So your general fund had revenues of a little over 43.5 million with expenditures coming in at 42.9 million. So we did have a change, a positive change. So our revenue exceeded our expenditures of about 546,000. So we started the year with fund balance of the 6.8 million. We added that 546,000 to it. So it brought our fund balance up to almost 7.4 million. In the second column there, you can see that we had a significant portion of revenue, $4 million there for your capital projects fund. And we just had a little bit of expenditures, about 790,000. So the change in fund balance was 3.2 million. And because it was a new fund this year, we started the year with a zero fund balance. So everything that was in the change is what's in your fund balance as of June 30th. On the third column there for your non-major funds, the change in the fund balance for the year was a decrease of about 1.7 million. Now, a lot of that, about 960,000 of it, is related to your 2016 capital projects fund as that was wrapping up during this fiscal year, which really is the intent of that fund is you get those bond proceeds, just like we can see in the 2020 column there. And then as the projects are happening throughout the year, we're spending down that revenue. So we do see where we have, you know, dip into the fund balance, which is the intent of those capital projects fund. Now, on the next page, we have shown this graph here over the past five years. And it's comparing what your general fund fund balance is as a percentage of general fund expenditures, really focusing on your peer group. And we base the information off of last year's financial data. So that's why you see the 2018, 2019 information there at the top. Now, you fall into this peer group. But just wanted to point out, you are on the lower end of the peer group. So we use your state aid membership, which was about 3,582 from your state aid report. So you are on the lower end. And in looking at the general fund expenditures, the percent is 17.22% of total fund balance. However, I do want to point out two different calculations that we do here. I know in working with your district that, you know, you have some assigned fund balance where you're looking at some of the subsequent year's expenditures, as well as what is the building and department expenditures, too. So when we take a look at those and actually pull that out of the equation, then really that percentage drops down to about 9.7%. And even dipping in further, if we just focus on what we classify as unassigned, which would be the dollars that are not assigned or restricted for other purposes, that fund balance percentage is only 5.5%. So I do just want to point that out. And I know MDE has that recommended range of about 15 to 20% is what they would consider a healthy fund balance. So in looking at the total, you are right in that range with your 17.22%. The next couple of slides that we have here are looking at your general fund budget. This one excludes your tribal grants. The next slide, I'll go over the tribal grants. But looking at what is your original budget? So to me, I always explain that's the best guess at the beginning of the fiscal year with the information you know at that time. So the original budget column, that's the best guess at the beginning of the fiscal year. We thought the net change was going to be about 1.3 million, you know, dipping into our fund balance. And then, as we know, throughout the year, a lot of things happen. And especially this year, a lot of changes, a lot of balls in the air, I would say, where we really didn't know where they were going to land. And I would say up until a couple of weeks ago, we were still getting information as to how to report and record things. So your final budget then is the amendments made during the year. So then that's your best guess closest to June 30th. And that was about 468,000 adding to fund balance. And then you can see that next column is what actually happened. I like to do percent accurate. I know a couple of my colleagues always do like the percent that you're off. And I'm like, you know, but we should be focusing on the positive. We're talking about $45 million. I don't know about you, but my budget, you know, my personal budget is not like that. So when you see these big dollars that, oh, you know, we thought we were going to dip into fund balance of 1.3 million when we actually added almost 700,000, you know, those are some big dollars. But you've got to remember the type of budget that you're dealing with. So I like to focus on what percent accurate were we when we were doing this budget? And when I say we, I mean, you know, you guys, the board and the finance department. You did an excellent job. Your percent accurate was, you know, 94.6% and 94%. So that, to me, is a darn good job in dealing with everything that was happening, especially with COVID, a lot of the federal dollars. I mean, we didn't know all this information closest to your last board meeting that you had in June to make these adjustments because you cannot adjust your final budget past June 30th. So great job there. On the next slide is then just looking at the tribal grants. And this one always looks a little funky, you know, because the revenues for the final budget are based on the current contribution. So woo-hoo, we got that right, 100% accurate. And then the expenditures, that is really what is available to be spent. So what is actually spent was 580,000. So those were the changes for your budget for the tribal grants. And that's just a separate section we like to look at differently compared to your general fund. And we do have some supplementary schedules in your financial statements for that as well. On page eight of the presentation, we do a quick comparison to your last year general fund revenue and expenditures. And we can tell that the revenue and other sources did go up almost 5%. And then looking at that detail to see what that was really attributable to was an increase in your state sources, about 1 million. And also, we did see an increase in your federal sources this year, too, of about 500,000. Your expenditures and other uses were, you know, pretty flat, 1.6% increase over last year. Now, the next couple of graphs are just a different way to look at where the revenue is coming from. And here we have state aid making up about 58% of your total general fund revenue along with your local property taxes, admissions, and athletic fees and contributions are what make up the 28% of your total general fund revenue. Now, same type of graph, but now we're focusing on your expenditures. And then breaking it down into instruction, supporting services. We had some capital outlay and then a little bit of what we classify as other. But instruction really is the basic programs, the elementary, high school, middle school, and also the added needs. And you were at 65%. And I looked up last year and it was the same allocation. So 65% instruction last year as well. Supporting services was 32%, very comparable to last year, which was 31%. So pretty similar to the way that the general fund expenditures were allocated last year. Now, this slide just breaks it down in a different format as to the general fund expenditures and where those dollars are going. And if we look at the salaries and fringes, we can see that 84% of our general fund budget really is spent on people. It's spent on their salaries and then all of the benefits that are provided as well. And I would say most districts, it's very common to be 80 to 85% of your general fund expenditures being related to salaries and then the benefits. The 2016 bond progress. So here, we've been charting your revenue and then the expenditures related to those bond dollars. And I'm happy to report, we did finish your bond audit since you were 95% complete based on the expenditures. And we were able to complete that bond audit. So that has been submitted also to MDE. So we did have the 26.5 million in your revenue with the 25.6 million in your expenditures year to date. Now, we're going to start seeing that same type of progress. This is the first year, so we decided to do the bar chart instead of a line graph. But we'll start doing the line graph as we get a few more years to watch this. The expenditures also related to your 2020 bond progress grow as well. So we do have a little over 4 million in revenue in the 2020 capital projects bond, which came in, I think it was February 2020, if I remember correctly. And then we all know the following month, you know, COVID hit. And so those projects got put on hold. So we only spent about $792,000 related to that during this fiscal year. So next year, we'll see those expenditures growing for the 2020 bond project. And then we have your Mipsers rate of return, too, that we've been charting for the retirement system. So we do have the 10-year history. And it did increase again this year, about 1.32%. So just wanted to point that out when you're talking about budgeting and your expenditures, too, of where we come from, you know, back in 2011 was 20.66%. And now we're up to 27.5%. On the internal controls. So in addition to doing a financial statement audit, as your auditors, we are also required to gain an understanding of the internal controls that you have at the district and also to make sure that they're operating properly. And for us to get an understanding of those, we walk through your key transaction cycles. And that's with your dispersments, your receipts, your payroll, capital assets. So we walk through all of those. We also do a couple of tests for management override of controls and looking at your adjusting journal entries. And then this year, with everything that we were faced with, with COVID-19, we know a lot of districts had to make a few changes in the way, you know, their businesses were operating. So whether we had to rotate when, you know, the finance department was coming in and working every other day, we then decided we should probably make sure that the internal controls are the same operation-wise before COVID. And then also when people were working remotely, because we did not want to see be a hole in your internal controls that just promotes the opportunity for fraud. So we did focus a lot on what we called our COVID-19 considerations. So those were any changes that happened due to COVID based on the controls that were in place. And so we did walk through those as well. And we did not report, as you can tell from this page, we did not have any material weaknesses or have to report any significant deficiencies. So a great job there. And then this year, we tested your nutrition cluster. So because you do receive and spend more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, you have to have a compliance audit done, or we refer to it as a single audit. And so you were issued an unmodified opinion. We did not have any material modifications that needed to be made in that aspect as well. And then we do have a governance letter. So we have the communication that we're required to report to the board. And I just wanted to point out a couple of items in there. One of them being, we did implement GASB 84 this year. So that was related to the fiduciary activities. As I mentioned, we did have a new fund this year. It was the students and activity accounts. So those used to be reported towards the back of the statement. We called them a fiduciary activity. Now they're reported as a special revenue fund. So they're still in your financial statements. They're just in a different area. We did have three estimates in the financial statements related to your net pension liability, your net OPEB liability, and then also with your useful lives of your capital assets. And then also in the governance letter, there was some regulatory and other updates. I wouldn't make sure that you read through those. There was one item in there that's talking about making sure that the district does review their district level reporting by building. So what happened is the USDA has been pushing this for a few years. And I think MDE was dragging their feet. And we finally had to give in and make sure that we're following those reporting requirements. So it kind of took the place of No Child Left Behind. But it wants to make sure that the chart of accounts that you're using, you guys do use the building codes. You're able to track by building. And it wanted to make sure it was being, the expenditures were being fairly spent by building per pupil. So that is going to be some information that MDE is going to report in the future. And it does, we just put in there to make sure that you review that report when it comes out and make sure that it's accurate. And you're not, you know, charging something for the administration building to the middle school or to the high school. So just make sure you take the time to review that report. And the only nutrition comment that we had related to nutrition was with the cash management. We did select three months of cash requests. And we did note, one did not have the meal magic report that matched what was claimed. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I know we've already spoke with Ginger about it. And we also understand that there was some turnover in the food service director position at that time as well. So that is also noted in your governance letter. Some future challenges. We kind of talked about it a little bit of the COVID-19, just, you know, dealing with those changes. As I said, we were still getting information from MDE. A couple of weeks ago, we were kind of holding off on finalizing some of our reports until we definitely heard from them as to, are we recording the revenue this year? Do we record the revenue next year? You know, virtual learning and enrollment is obviously a hot topic. State funding, you have a couple of bond projects going on. And then, as I've listed in the past, we do have that pension obligation, which is a little over 79 million. And then also the OPEB obligation, which is over 17.1 million. I did add one new slide this year. I just wanted to put on here, these were all the additional funding sources that were coming in this year. The top two were coming through on your state aid report. So we saw it on the state aid report, but then we're informed that we can't record it this year. So I tried to put on there when the expenditures, when we can record the expenditures related to the revenue. But then the revenue is going to be recorded in the next year. So it does get a little bit confusing. And it was very hard, you know, trying to budget that information, too. So I tried to list it all out here in as much detail. And like I said, those were changing the SRF funds, too. It really depended on when you got your grant notification and when you could record that revenue. If you got it before June 30th, you could put it in the year we audited. However, yours was after June 30th, so it needs to go into next year. So a lot of items were changing at the very end. So I tried to summarize them here so you could see, you know, we did have expenditures that we were recording this year, but the related revenue isn't going to be recognized until next year. So that concludes my presentation. I wanted to thank Ginger and her team for all their help. You know, we tried to do as much remotely as possible and, you know, get in and get out just for everybody's safety reasons. And we do appreciate all her hard work and her team's hard work, especially, I know you're going through a software conversion. And we did that a couple of years ago, so I do, I feel for you. But if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions for Jamie regarding our annual audit review? Jamie, I have one question regarding the the OAPEDB and the pension liabilities. Should we be tracking those? And if they're raising or dropping or they are abstract in how they're being accounted for? Or is there a way to actually measure? Since you're looking at them and what our liability is, is there a way to work toward lowering that in some way?
I wish I had that answer. There are so many assumptions that go into that calculation that's done by an actuary every year. And then you are given your, what they call proportionate share of that pie, if you will. So I don't have an answer for you on that. I do know it's tracked. I have a footnote that I can direct you to the page that maybe that will help answer your question where you can see where you have been over the past couple of years. So let me just get that page number for you. And if that doesn't answer your question, maybe I can come up with something else. And I don't know if you have a copy of the report or not, but I can tell you the numbers. So on 5-3 is where the section B, if you go down to that second line where it says school districts proportionate share of net pension liability.
Yeah.
That is your share of the total pension liability.
So it's not really necessarily our district's component. It's the share of the total liability of the entire statewide fund.
You got it. And let me find the footnote because there's about six or seven pages. If you really want to get into it, that talks about what that total is. It's footnote number 11, and it starts on page 4-21. That's the pension plan. And note 12 will go right into your other post-employment benefits.
Okay.
So and there's, there's a lot of information in there, too. So if you have a question, you know, you know how to get ahold of me. I'd be more than happy to talk it through with you.
Thank you, Jamie. And just a note for board members, the financial statement has a lot of information and it's very helpful. So it's a very time-consuming thing to read, but it's a very helpful thing to understand. Does any other board members have any questions for Jamie? One other comment. Ginger, thank you for your hard work, especially during this crazy time. And thank you to your team, especially supporting Jamie and Yo and Yo as they're doing their audit. I know that must have been crazy. But also for the hard work and the quality of the work that you're doing is definitely showing in our annual reports that we get, our annual audits year by year. So thank you very much, Ginger, and to your team.
Thank you, and I will definitely pass them that along to my team. It definitely takes a village. And I just want to reiterate what Jamie said. They're amazing to work with. This was a crazy year, the first ever virtual pre-audit. And a lot of challenges, but it's such a great team to work with that we made it through just perfectly. So I appreciate Jamie and her team and everything they do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. And now, Ginger, are we going on to your audit presentation now? I know, Jamie, you have to get off to another meeting. So thank you very much. Have a great evening. Ginger, I will share your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with my quick PowerPoint that I usually share with you to kind of break it down into numbers that we typically look at when we're budgeting. The first is just our fund balance, general fund with tribal grants. You'll see the beginning and ending balance and then our net increase of $546,945. It matches what Jamie had mentioned in her presentation. And then I broke that, I went further and I broke that down because we always like to look at our general fund without excluding tribal grants. So we get a real picture at the dollars that we have to work with, if you will. the dollars that we have to, to work with, if you will. So of that, general fund was almost seven hundred thousand dollars, and the tribal grants was a negative one hundred and fifty, which makes sense, because we're trying to spend those grants down. The next slide is a breakdown of what all that, our fund balance is split into. There's inventory, a small amount of inventory, which is just glove supplies, which are latex, which we have a hard time getting rid of in the district because of allergies and things like that. So we're still trying to work through that supply and get rid of those. Prepaid items are three hundred and ten dollars. It was just a membership due that was paid in either May, or I think it was May, but that was for the 2021 school year. So we record that in prepaid, and then we'll reverse it and record it as an actual expenditure in, in the 2021 school year. The tribal grants was one point eight million that we still have left on our books to spend down. Building and department expenditures, that's a lot smaller this year than it typically is in the past, because we had decided not to carry over the PSC and the curriculum budget lineups. That's where that typically falls. So in there right now, and that seventy-six thousand dollars is kind of the fund balance for driver's education and the community alternative program that are kind of self-sustaining programs. And one of those is, is going away in 2021. But subsequent years expenditures is what the board had approved for the 2021 budget that was approved very late in June. We, we predicted spending into fund balance, three point one million dollars, so that's set aside in our fund balance. And then everything left over is the unassigned of the two point three million dollars. So then I like to break it down into what we can actually use, our usable fund balance, general fund without tribal grants. I put in that building and department expenditures, the subsequent year expenditure, and the unassigned. That brings us a fund balance of five point five million dollars. It's really usable, excluding the tribal grants and the small inventory and prepaid item stuff that's in there. As a percentage of our total expenditures, that's a twelve point nine-two percent fund balance. As Jamie said, the state really encourages a fifteen to twenty percent as a healthy fund balance. That is a slight increase of just over two percent from last year. The budget to actual comparison, overall, general fund being, ended up being overbudgeted by two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. We planned on adding back into fund balance on the, the June budget revision that was approved. We planned on adding back into fund balance, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, with the effort of everyone in the district to conserve, along with COVID throwing a little wrench in the whole plan of everything, we ended up actually contributing back six hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So revenues came in under budget as well as expenditures, and that's really typical. You know, we receive large grants, like our Project Aware Grant is a great example. We receive a large amount of money. We budget the whole grant and revenue and the whole grant and expenditures. We typically don't spend the whole thing in one year, because we're allowed, because we are allowed carryover. So revenues would be overstate, overbudgeted as well as expenditures by the same amount. So overall, when you look at a two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar budget variance based on a forty-five million dollar budget, this, I know, is a lot different number than the ninety-four percent that Jamie showed, but this is, this is the number that we look at, the actual variance with general fund excluding tribal grants. We're looking at over ninety-nine percent accuracy, which is pretty impressive based on the, the crazy year we had. So again, kudos to my whole team, kudos to our auditors. Everybody in the district is doing amazing with being diligent with their budgets, and it really shows every year when we give this presentation. I'm, I'm very thankful for everyone and their, their hard work to help us preserve, not preserve this fund health, but, you know, not, not go too low. So I know that was very quick, and I ran through it pretty fast, but if you have any questions, I would more, be more than glad to help answer them.
Do the board members have a question for Ginger regarding her presentation?
I just have a general question. How often does the district get audited? Is it a yearly occurrence, or is?
For financial audits, yes, it's an annual occurrence. It usually happens, we have a pre-audit in May or June, and then we have a whole week long of audit in the beginning of August. At any given time, though, the state or the federal government could come in and audit different grants and different programs, but for a financial audit, it's once a year.
Thank you.
Ginger, I have a question. In Jamie's presentation, she was, we're talking to some of the expenditures of COVID happened to be booked in last year's, but the revenues won't get booked until this year's, and so they will never really match up. Is that correct?
It is, except we didn't end up booking any expenditures in the nineteen-twenty school year. Because of how late all of that information came down from the government in August, it was, it was too late to change our budget. We didn't know when we were receiving the grants until they pretty much showed up on our state aid payment. And then for the two SIR grants, we didn't even budget those and have those approved until late September this year. So there was really no way for us to code any expenditures that had happened in the nineteen-twenty school year for these grants. And we knew that we would really be able to use them in the 2021 for all the PPE and for supplies that we had to purchase, as well as any, like, extra payments for staff teaching blended and different, you know, scenarios like that that we've discussed plenty of times. But so we are, so yes, but in Mount Pleasant Public Schools, the expenditures and the revenue will be coded in the 2021 school year.
Okay, thank you. Because I also noticed that there's actually new coding accounts to track those in our system, so we can actually see what the costs were regarding the COVID things, expenditures and the revenues that are associated with that.
Yes.
Thank you, Ginger. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ginger. The next item under my report is board candidate introductions. As you all know, we have seven candidates running for three spots on our board, and so we wanted to invite each candidate to join us for our board meeting this evening and give us a two to three minute introduction, and tell us a little bit about themselves and why they're interested in running for the board. So we're going to do that at this point in the meeting, and I don't have a real scientific way of calling on our candidates, so we just figured we would go in alphabetical order. So our first candidate this evening is Dana Hawkins, and I will flip over here. What I will do is permit talking for our candidates, and then ask them to unmute. So Dana, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right, well, good to see everyone again. I know it's been kind of crazy for everyone. And when I've talked about running for the school board, many people have said, "You just, you just retired," and it seems like the best time ever for you to retire. And at the same time, I knew within very, a very short period of time that I was not done with education. So I thought about how I could contribute, and in what, if anything, I can, I can give back. I think when COVID, COVID came out in March, I was still on contract as, for some of you that don't know this, as the middle school principal until the end of June. So I was part of all the conversation with administration about what are we going to do now? And Mike Pong used to say, "We're building a plane in midair." And I tell you what, at that point, no truer words could be spoken. Jennifer, I don't think you learned about COVID when you went to superintendent school. So we were all trying to have our best thoughts, and so that was one thing that I think really inspired me to run for school board. I think I have a different perspective, knowing all the blood, sweat, and tears that went into that, and how well it has turned out. I think, I think that I've been in education for over thirty-five years. Twenty-five of those was in Colorado, different school district, much larger school district. So I have, I have two school districts that I can compare and contrast. Ten years was in Mount Pleasant, or have been in Mount Pleasant, and it's, it's been, it's my community, even though I was in Colorado for a lot longer. I want to be able to give back to the community that has given me so much. I've been an assistant principal in two different high schools. One is the athletic director, one in curriculum and staff development. Principal of two different elementary schools, one being Mary Maguire, and two different middle schools, one being Mount Pleasant Middle School. I think what, another thing that really has me excited about the possibility of being on the school board is when we watched the effects of COVID. I, I think if anything, we knew there was a divide in, in the accessibility of our students, the students that are maybe our underrepresented populations. I think what's come to light is how wide actually that divide is for the accessibility, and, and I think that is in the forefront. That's always been one of my passions, to, to have a voice or to help our underrepresented populations actually have a voice. And I think I've got, I've got pretty good relationships with the tribe, for one, with the community in general. And having been retired, I have a little bit of time that I can get out and really speak to people and, and be able to bring that to the board. So there's a little bit, just a, that's a different perspective. I, I think, I think it's really my passion that every child has the opportunity for an excellent education. And the teachers that I have seen, we have excellent teachers, we have excellent staff from top to bottom, and I don't think that anyone would say that, that the intent is not to give every kid the best education. It absolutely is. I think we're just having now to look at it differently, and to be forward-thinking, and to really have great conversations about, okay, where do we go now? How do we make this happen? And how do, I think I can bridge the gap of the conversations. With COVID, everyone, no one knew who to believe, who, what to think. I mean, we all were fearful. And so with that then, there came a situation where we didn't know when the communication was there, but no one knew what to believe or who to believe, and what, what I think I can bring with the opportunity for me to get out and speak to teachers, to the community, I think that, that might be a good way to bridge that gap.
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next board candidate is Jessica Jernigan. Jessica, are you there?
Yes, I am.
We can go right ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Um, before I begin, I'd like to thank Superintendent Burliger and the school board for giving candidates an opportunity to introduce ourselves tonight. So thank you. Um, since moving to Mount Pleasant in two thousand and four, I've been employed as a freelance writer and editor. Before that, I was a corporate marketing manager specializing in digital communication. I'm a mom, I'm part of a household with two working parents. My husband teaches at CMU. Now that our child has started high school, I'd like to devote more time to community service, and I think the school board is a place where I can use my skills most effectively. I am deeply committed to equity and inclusion. I want our schools to be places where all students can thrive. I think that the school board can help Mount Pleasant Public Schools achieve this goal by fostering conversation between the schools and the community. This is a part of the mission of the school board. This portion of the school board's bylaws spells this out explicitly. The board declares and reaffirms its intent to maintain two-way communications with the citizens of the district. The board shall keep them informed of the progress and problems of the school district, and the citizens shall be urged to bring their aspirations and concerns about the district to the attention of this body. I know that community members are always welcome to speak at board meetings. I also know that anyone who has any questions or concerns about our schools can contact any board member at any time. I don't question that the school board is fulfilling its basic function as a representative body, and I acknowledge that the board is, you know, meeting the benchmark for communication established in its bylaws. Nevertheless, I would really like to see the board do more. I would like to bring more of Mount Pleasant to the table when we're making decisions that affect everyone in our community. I would like to be an advocate for all students, all parents and other caregivers, all teachers and staff, and all the other citizens in our community. Everyone you're hearing from tonight is an education professional, I think. My only teaching experience has been as a volunteer, but my professional life has been in one way or another about communication. I believe I have the skills that the school board can use. If you'd like to learn more about me or my campaign, you can visit jerniganforschoolboard.com. You can also find me on Facebook at Jessica Jernigan for School Board. That's my pitch for my campaign. While I have the floor for just another minute, I'd like to remind voters that it's not too late to request an absentee ballot here in Michigan, and anyone who lives within Mount Pleasant city limits can do this in person at the city clerk's office. You can also hand-deliver your ballot by using the drop box just outside the clerk's office, or the drop box sitting outside city hall in the parking lot. Please vote. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next candidate is Riley Justice. I will find you, Riley, here in the list of names. Riley, if you're on the meeting this evening, can you raise your hand, please? Riley, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
I apologize. I couldn't find you right there.
Oh, no problem.
This evening.
Hey, no problem at all. Thank you so much for having me, and I'll echo the other members, and thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak this evening. So my name is Dr. Riley Justice. And as means of a brief introduction, I'd like to just go over a couple of points. First and foremost, I'm a parent of two students within Mount Pleasant Public Schools, a proud Euler, proud family member within the Mount Pleasant community. I'm the husband of a Mount Pleasant educator. And myself, I am a lifelong educator. I'm a teacher that's been certified in three different states and seven different subject areas. I've been a principal, a curriculum director, a superintendent, and I currently work in educational technology. My organization currently works with over eighty-five million users across the educational spectrum, in schools across this country and across the world. I'm a professional educational researcher. My research focus is on student assessment, data science, and the policy impact that data has on our learning outcomes. As a candidate to the Mount Pleasant Public School Board, I like to bring a parent's perspective, deep and diverse educational experience, and I'm an individual that's focused on strategic leadership to impact systemic change. I'm running on a platform of community reflective practice and policy, fiscal responsibility, and promoting learning in education. Opportunities within the district to ensure that all students have equitable access to educational opportunities. I'd like to also point out, just an interesting point, throughout my campaign, I've been asked time and time again where my allegiances lie, where my loyalty lies within this community and within this district. I'd like to point out the one question I haven't been asked is, "Am I loyal to the students that we serve?" That has been my primary focus throughout my entire career, and will continue to be in my candidacy for a board seat in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I think it is vital, all of our teachers that are working so hard, the administration that is working tirelessly with the times that we have with COVID, but we have to keep in the forefront of every conversation, the students that we serve. Are they receiving the services that they need, the services that we promised them, and the system, is it's working for them? So thank you so much for the time this evening. I look forward to your vote, and I look forward to any information or any questions people have reaching out to me directly. Would be happy to work with them individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Next, we have Tyler Morkin. Tyler, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Great. So when I was in elementary school, my teachers would line us up to go to lunch alphabetically, and then halfway through the year, we'd switch. And so I was, I was in the middle. I never got to go first. So I, I know how it feels being on this in alphabetical order, but I appreciate that. So I do want to thank Jennifer and members of the school board for inviting us here today. It's a great honor to be able to speak and share this time. So my name is Tyler Morkin. My goal in running for the board is to My goal in running for the board is to bring a teacher's perspective to the board. Each one of our board members now certainly brings valuable perspective with them. And this certainly is not meant as a criticism of anyone currently on the board. But I do believe that our K-12 teachers do need somewhat of a voice at the board level a little more so than we have now. So I, as you can guess, I am a K-12 teacher myself, have experience teaching in several different districts, including right here in Mount Pleasant. I've also taught K-12 learners online through Michigan Virtual, have taught at the college level, a variety of courses, and as well worked in faculty support and student affairs. So I really have a diverse background when it comes to education, to teaching, and all of that I can certainly bring to the board. So similar to Dana, I didn't retire, but I did, I did leave K-12 education for personal reasons and to pursue other endeavors. But I always felt like, you know, it was an area I didn't really ever want to let go. And, you know, I still am a certified teacher. I still look fondly at my time in K-12, really do miss teaching. And I feel like this is a way that I can kind of, you know, stay in touch with K-12 and kind of get back into it a little bit. So as a board member, my, my goal really is, is relationship building. That's what I think is hugely important. It's what we ask our teachers to do day in and day out in the classroom. It's what they do a great job at, day in and day out in the classroom. And I feel like the, the board really sets the tone for all of those relationships and everything that happens within our district from, from that perspective. And so if anyone's been following some of the stuff I posted on Facebook, if you attended or watched the League of Women Voters Forum, you've heard me mention him before, but Sir Ken Robinson, someone I greatly admire in education, who is, you know, recently, unfortunately, we lost, passed away. But one of his quotes really resonates with me, and that is, quote, "The real role of leadership in education is climate control, creating a climate of possibility." And so the board certainly has perfunctory duties, fiscal obligations. We just heard the audit today. And, and all of that is hugely important and obviously necessary. But I do believe that, you know, the, the, creating that climate really does start at the board level. And so one of the things I really do want to do is, one of my goals is by the end of the school year, I would, if elected, I would like to step foot in every school building. I would like to interact with our teachers and our kids. And even just simple things like, you know, asking a teacher, how is it going? Is there anything I can do for you? How are you feeling about this year? Certainly for many of our teachers, this is probably one of the most difficult years in their career. And so just, just reaching out, even if there are limited things you really truly can do, just, just reaching out and making your presence known and having a conversation and engaging with them, I believe is hugely important and can go a long way, as well as partnerships outside of our district. So I don't quite have the, the connection and rapport that Dana does to the tribe, but I have reached out and talked to several members, including Melissa Isaac, Director of Education out there. And, and we both agreed when we chatted that, you know, the school, although there are some great things happening right now in our district in partnership with the tribe, we need to, we need to build those partnerships stronger. And we need to make sure that the travel perspective is, is not even just not forgotten, but not an afterthought as well. So we've got so many great opportunities in the district, you know, with CMU, Mid-Michigan College, our tech center. I grew up in rural upper Michigan. The nearest college campus for me was 100 miles away. The nearest vocational center was 40 miles away. You know, our students have amazing opportunities right in their backyards. And, and we need to continue to invest in those from a resource standpoint and also a partnership standpoint. So I thank you so much for the time that you've given. If anyone would like to connect with me on, you know, with my campaign, feel free. I'm on Facebook, facebook.com/morkinforschoolboard. Just so you know, it's M-O-R-K-I-N. Some people think it's Morgan. Also at morkinforschoolboard.com. And if you want to contact me, all of our contact information for those who participated is on vote411.org, as well as in the printed Vote 411 Voters Guide. Feel free. My email's in there. My phone number's in there. Feel free to call. Feel free to email. I'm happy to, happy to talk.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Tim Odeker.
Good evening, everyone. As Jen said, I'm Tim Odeker. And I'm running for the Mount Pleasant Board of Education because I believe that public schools are the most powerful, efficient, and effective community institution that has proven to positively impact a community's vision for their children to become engaged, empowered, happy, and successful. My Mount Pleasant Public Schools has shown that it has the incredible ability to uplift all of our young community members, which in turn makes Mount Pleasant area a great place to live. I think my voice and work over these past 12 years that I've been on the school board shows that I've been committed to working with the district's team of educators toward the empowerment of our children. So they are prepared to achieve this happiness and success in their jobs, with their families, and the community. Mount Pleasant Public Schools has a strong mission, empower excellence, and a powerful vision to create an inclusive school community of engaged, inspired, and empowered learners. I want to continue my work and my commitment toward this vision for our students and staff. I also want to continue my contribution as one of the voices of the community on the school board team as it partners with the amazing expertise and dedication of the educators within the district as we all work on its mission. I want to continue my commitment to the students, my commitment to the families, and my commitment to Mount Pleasant Public Schools. But people are always asking me, how can you take me on the school board and as long as you have? And you know, the reason why I do is because I find this work to be quite enjoyable. It's enjoyable because I see the daily and positive and empowering impact the district has on students, the families, and our community. I do have unique experiences that qualify me to hold this office. As I have mentioned, I'm completing my 12th year on the Mount Pleasant Board of Education at the end of this calendar year. These years of commitment have proved, provided me with very unique experience and knowledge that will support my further contributions to the board, district, and community. Also, during this time, I've been dedicated to actively furthering my boardmanship development through training with organizations like the Michigan Association of School Boards. I've also created and attended community activities that have allowed me to engage with many of the different groups in our community to better understand their goals for their families and their goals for the district and the community. In my professional work at CMU, it provides me experiences in public education that broadens my knowledge of the entire spectrum of K-12 education through higher education. And this professional work also provides me with the unique opportunities to see and experience a larger spectrum of education structures and programs that contribute to my knowledge in this unique and creative endeavor that we call public education. All of that goes to support my contribution to the board and to our community. I also have many longstanding relationships with members of the community who have had kids in Mount Pleasant Public Schools, or who have kids in Mount Pleasant Public Schools, or who are excited to one day have kids in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I always ask them about what they want from Mount Pleasant Schools, and what do they want for their kids? And what are the areas that they've learned that Mount Pleasant Public Schools need to do more work on? I want to continue to contribute my passion and energy to Mount Pleasant Public Schools as it continues to work toward creating its vision and being an inclusive community of engaged, inspired, and empowered learners. So I'm running again for the honor of once again being a school board member of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Please vote for me, Tim Odeker. Or if you've already voted, thank you for voting, but nonetheless, vote. And as Tyler had mentioned, for more information, go to vote411.org, which is the League of Women Voters. And there's a lot of extra information there on all the board members that are running. And switching hats a little bit, I want to thank everyone who's running for school board. It's an excellent plate of people who have great skills and great contributions to the community. And so thank you for stepping up and taking on this hard role. So thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Our next candidate is Wilene Pingle.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, all of you, for listening to us this evening. I think it's a wonderful way to get to share all of our views and have this public, especially at a time when our meetings are virtual. My name is Dr. Wilene Pingle. For those of you that don't know me, I am a faculty member of the Biology Department at CMU, a parent of two Mount Pleasant Public School students, and a community member. I am in a very unique position tonight, as I have just been appointed on our school board a month ago to finish the term of a member that resigned. The term I'm appointed for is for two years, and it doesn't change my election run. I still need your vote. If elected in November, I would have the six-year term, which I would prefer. I feel strongly about our community, and I feel that the school board is indeed where I can do that best. I am a mom with two kids in the school system. They are both currently online Oilers. And I understand how a pandemic challenges families. I am dealing with it every single day. As a CMU faculty member, I teach a number of classes, including one for our pre-service teachers, and including also our classes on how to maintain high inquiry even when teaching online. Those are workshops that we offer through our STEM Center, for instance, at CMU. As a scientist, I can help navigate the science of a pandemic. I think our public schools should first and foremost be a safe environment. And then secondly, a welcoming environment while doing all this, maintaining high educational standards. This is a substantial challenge in COVID-19 times, and one that I think as a board we can address. I've been attending board meetings for years. I understand what it means to be a board member and the responsibilities that come with it. I look forward to helping our community in this role for a full term. And I thank you for this time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pingle. And our last candidate is Bob Zerowski. Bob, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
You can. Go right ahead.
All right. Last but not least. First of all, I want to say thanks for the opportunity to speak to the board tonight and introduce myself. And also, I want to thank the board, the administration, educators, and all the other school personnel that were involved. And as I watched the board meetings, all the extra work preparing for everything you had to do for COVID this year, going through all the processes and stuff like that to keep the education of our children as normal and consistent as possible. I mean, it was no small feat what you guys accomplished, and I just want to say thank you very much for that. Obviously, I'm speaking tonight because I am running for a seat on the Mount Pleasant School Board. So I thought I would just say a little bit about myself for you that do not know me. I graduated from Northwood University with a bachelor's degree in business administration. I owned and operated my own business for roughly about 20 years. And that business required an awful lot of travel. So once I had children, I kind of changed gears and started working for a business here in Mount Pleasant so that I could be home with my children. My background is a little bit different than most other board members in that it is not a heavy educational background. I done no teaching or anything of that nature. But I do feel that the school and the audit and all the numbers and all that stuff kind of prove that the Mount Pleasant Public Schools or any school system is really a big business. And there are a lot of entities that need to be run in that. And I feel that my 30 years of business management experience will just help give the board a different perspective outside of just the educational background perspective. I've had a lot of experience leading people, which includes listening to a lot of different concerns, and then come up with problem resolutions. I've had to work on and within an awful lot of budgets with my business and within the business that I've worked with, determining why money gets spent here and maybe not over there. It's never an easy decision to do those types of things, but they have to be done. And I felt like over the years, the saving grace is transparency and communication. As long as you explain people, this is the decision we've come up with. This is why we've come up with this decision. You know, sorry, it's affecting you more than others. I think people are more able to accept that than just simply not knowing why the decision was made. And this decision, and this is it. So I feel as long as the communication is pretty clear. And I've talked with, you know, educators, staff members at the school, parents and things of that nature. And a lot of times, even in one of the interviews we had during this candidacy, you know, I asked them about the communication process. And the people interviewing me were uncertain of what the communication process was and who is to communicate. So I think that is just a huge, huge part that I would bring those of you that may know me know that conversations are not short with me, and I am not shy in sharing information. I really feel as a member of the school board that I would reach out to, you know, administration, educators, parents, the community, gather as much information as possible on any project or policies or budgets or anything that we were working on and try and come up with the best resolve for that. That is how I would educate myself to the decisions that we would have to make because they're going to affect a lot of people. Ultimately, we want the decision to benefit the students the best. But our, you know, our educators and our parents, we need their support in order for this to be a successful endeavor in whichever way we do it. I am also a proud parent of three daughters who have been educated through the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Two have graduated and are attending CMU right now, and a third is currently a sophomore at the high school. And I have been very, very proud of what they have accomplished because of their education and their experiences within the public school system. I mean, we just have an awful lot to offer at Mount Pleasant Public Schools, being the largest school in the school district and surrounding schools. We offer an awful lot of things, and sometimes I don't think those get communicated very well or very clearly to outside people. And I think, again, the communication aspect, letting people know what we have to offer. I think that could be done maybe just a little bit better. And I have truly become involved as a part of it through my community involvement. For many, many years, I have coached football. I have coached basketball. I have coached volleyball. I have coached softball. And really, really enjoyed helping be a positive influence on so many children's lives. And I really think that being a member of the Board of Education would allow me to become a part of a team whose goal is to create a positive learning environment for students and a great workplace for our teachers' administration. It would just allow me to enhance what I've already been doing for many, many years. I've been, you know, coaching and involved in children's lives for more than 15 years. And I really feel that with my education and my work history and the community involvement that I've had, that I would really be beneficial member to the Board of Education. Again, bringing maybe a little bit different perspective than just the education background. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the education background, but I just may have a little bit different perspective. So with that being said, I would just say, please be sure, just get out there and vote in November because it is no question shaping up to be one of those for the history books. I promise you that. I'd love to have an opportunity to serve you and the students of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. You know, if you find it in your heart to vote for Robert Zerowski, please do. And I just want to thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, Bob. And that wraps up my report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Burliger. And again, thank you all the candidates for coming forward and describing what you can have impact on our community. And thank you for stepping up. The next item on our agenda is your requested financial reports. Ginger.
Thank you. I have
Thank you. I have for you the financial reports for general fund and special service funds. Revenue and expenditure comparison, budget to actual for the month ending September two thousand nineteen compared to September two thousand twenty. For general fund, our revenues are currently at ten percent of budget this year compared to five percent last year. That huge change is again because of the large cares grant. Cares grants that we received in August. The expenditures are currently at twelve percent this year compared to eleven percent last year. For the special service funds, athletics, this is a self-sustaining sports athletics. Revenue is at zero percent this year compared to nine percent last year and expenditures are zero percent both years. For the Children's Learning Center, revenue is at twenty-three percent of budget this year compared to twenty-seven percent last year. And expenditures are at thirteen percent this year compared to twenty percent last year. For the nurse testing program, again, that's just some fund balance as we spend that down to zero. That program out revenue is at zero percent both years and expenditures are at one percent this year compared to zero percent last year. For the food service program, so far this year, revenue was at two percent of budget compared to four percent last year. And expenditures are at nine percent this year compared to zero percent last year. And again, that is just timing as SFE was new to the district, getting their feet on the ground and getting invoices and stuff to us last year at this time. So we're just ahead of the game and we're behind of the game, behind the game last year. The school store revenue is at nine percent this year compared to twenty-nine percent last year. And expenditures are at zero percent this year compared to seventeen percent last year. For the treasures report for general fund, on August thirty-first, we had a cash balance of almost eight point five million dollars. We had receipts in the month of September of one point one million and dispersments of three point eight million. That brings us a balance on September thirtieth of five point eight million dollars. For the treasures report, I'm sorry, for the debt retirement fund, on August thirty-first, we had a cash balance of one point two million dollars. We had receipts in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand and no dispersments in the month of September. That brings us a balance on September thirtieth of one point three million dollars. And for the capital projects fund, on August thirty-first, we had four point three million dollars cash. We had a small amount of interest income, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the month of September and dispersments of four hundred and thirty-three thousand. That brings us a balance on September thirtieth of three point nine million dollars. And then you have all the detail following. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ginger, just one question. So it's almost the end of October. And so the month of November, December, we'll be doing revised budget, correct?
Yes, we will be receiving our first state aid payment of the year tomorrow, we should. And we're currently working on updating our very large and very involved spreadsheet with all of our salary and benefits and all the staff changes ins and outs and splits between buildings and all of that good stuff. So we are already in the process of updating all that. We hope to bring the budget to you in either November or December.
Thank you. It's going to be a busy, a busy change of this year. A lot of changes still are occurring with COVID, haven't they not?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ginger? I'm hearing none. We will go on to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence. We've received, or the board has received correspondence from Robin Urban, Stephanie Turpsbra and Shannon DeLeon. Actually, all three are dealing with the current structures of some of the district and we're moving with our next cycle of the next try in either the online or and in the classroom environments. And the board has been given copies of all of these emails. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So under the consent agenda, we have two items this evening. We have the approval of the October fifth, twenty twenty regular board meeting minutes. And we have the approval of the bills. There is a recommendation in our board packet from Ginger describing the bills in the total amounts of two million, six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve those two items under the consent agenda?
So moved Sheila.
Second Amy.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Sheila's volunteered to do, thank you Sheila for doing roll call votes. Roll call vote please.
Okay, Wheeling Pangle. Yes, Wheeling. Okay. Tim Odiker.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman.
Yes.
Brandon McQueen.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy. Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved unanimously. We will go on to the next item, which is new business. Under new business thing, first item is the resolution regarding action taken at virtual meetings. I had mentioned at the beginning of the board meeting that I was going to leave that to kind of describe and explain a little bit to the board what's been going on. In the Open Meetings Act have been a significant conversation in the school district and at the state level. As you all may remember, there was a Supreme Court ruling which limited the length of the governor's ability to do emergency executive orders. They ended that at the end of April. So all of those executive orders came to an end in April. Several of those orders allowed us to have virtual school board meetings. So when the Supreme Court made their ruling, that terminated the ability of the modifications to the Open Meeting Act, which then we would have had to have had a face-to-face board meeting at this time. And there was a question on whether all of our actions that we took at prior school board meetings that were virtual since the end of April were still standing or not. And so this was added when we did our budget meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. Because we were getting the advice that we needed to retroactively approve all of our actions from all the board meetings between the end of April. And now, so all of the approvals would then become valid at a face-to-face school board meeting. There were lots of presentations, lots of meetings. Deb took part, Jen took part in them. I've taken part in them. Things kept changing radically. The state legislature finally stepped up and started enacting some laws to modify some of the things that we were following that were executive orders that were extinguished by the Supreme Court. And one of them being the Open Meeting Act, which is what allows us to have our public meetings and how we need to do our public meetings. So the Senate and Senate Bill number eleven oh eight initiated a bill that allows us to kind of function in a virtual environment similar to what we're doing now. That did pass the House. And then over the weekend, the governor actually signed it. And it's now Public Act two twenty-eight of twenty twenty. There was a question, just because this year, I think it passed the House and Senate like on Wednesday and Thursday it was last week. And they actually call what have to do what's called packaging. They put them with other bills. They have to print them. They have to make sure they're printed correctly. And then the paper has to get literally hand carried to the governor's office. And they weren't sure that they were going to be able to do that in a timely manner. So for us to have a board meeting today, because they thought that she wouldn't be able to get it until Tuesday. So they were actually able to turn it around and the governor signed the law allowing us to have virtual school board meetings. Today at about four o'clock, Michigan Association of School Boards sent out another informational piece that I'm willing to share. And Yola has actually current, has created some, a policy that they will, that we will be seeing and that we will be sharing with you. Modifying our school district's policies to now align to the law that was signed on Saturday. So this would be allowing us to have virtual school board meetings. However, there are parameters to this. We will be allowed to have virtual school board meetings similar exactly like we've been having them until the end of the calendar year. So at the end of December through December thirty-first. And then from January first, two thousand twenty-one, for the rest of the remaining year, we have to have a school board meeting face-to-face. However, if there are some extenuating circumstances such as emergencies, the health department requiring not allowing us to meet in groups large enough. If personal, if board members have personal medical need requirements, we are allowed to have part of the school board can be virtual. All the presentations can be virtual. We will also have to have some kind of a face-to-face kind of a concept. So it's kind of in a flux period of time. So that would be through the remainder of the calendar year. And then after that, then it would go back to what the Open Meetings Acts used to be historically, which is virtual meetings are not allowed unless you're a member of the military. There are some restrictions on, or some information sharing that you have to do with our virtual meetings from the January first through. And one of those is there's to be requests. And then the school district actually has to tell the community where the board member who is virtual is literally at. The city township county that they're actually sitting in as part of that. They did remove the requirement that you had to have a medical note from your doctor to be allowed to be on the virtual meeting. So I will share this. I sent it over to Linda and Jen at four o'clock when I got it. So they'll give us a chance to look at it and then we're probably bringing it up at our next board meeting and let you guys see the language that they're recommending that we change. So as kind of a heads up, we will be virtual probably through the rest of the calendar year in this process. As part of the law that allowing us to change to the Open Meeting Act. That was just signed. So I would like to thank Jen Verliger and Deb for all of the creative things that they were trying to do to create a space that we could have a virtual face-to-face and a virtual online. And where can we have it with all the requirements of the health department and everything that's going on? Thank you for all of that work because it was been a lot of conversations and a lot of panicking, trying to figure out how we would be able to have a board meeting tonight. Thank you both for all of that work. It's kind of ironic how pieces kind of fell into place. Also, another aside is very interesting when we have Trune as our legal counsel. The Michigan Association of School Board has a legal counsel that we rely on. And they kind of came up with different reasons and different ways of doing things that weren't necessarily the same, looking at the exact same laws. So again, thank you. So does anyone kind of have any questions? Kind of that whole story, I just wanted to let everyone kind of be updated on where we're at and how we are allowed to have a virtual meeting this evening, the way that we are.
I don't have a question, Tim. I just wanted to add for the board its knowledge that our local public health officer, Steve Hall, has already declared a local state of emergency with no end date. So the board should choose to go into virtual meetings beyond January first. We already have the groundwork laid in Isabella County to be able to do that. So we can continue those conversations at future meetings. I just wanted you to know that the way the current state of emergency is for Isabella County, it does meet the requirements based on the new legislation that was passed. And there is no end date to Steve's declaration. So we would be covered there.
Thank you, Jen. That's good to know. And there's also some other things in the policy we can talk about when you guys get a chance to read it about some of the functioning and all that type of stuff. But I wanted to update you and everyone, just in case everyone was wondering why we were actually having a virtual meeting and how we kind of kept switching things at the last minute. So is there any other questions from any board members?
I don't have a question, Tim, but I want to thank you for the summary. That was really useful because there was so much information floating around. Getting an update tonight is very nice.
You're welcome. It was literally crazy. I don't think I've had so many meetings with lawyers online in my life. But that's okay. It's all good. So for the public's knowledge, we want to keep the public engaged. We want, and we found that being online, it hyper engages a lot of the public. And so that is a good thing. And very much aside, so the Michigan Association of School Board is actually trying to collect information on these hybrid online, face-to-face and what the impacts are to see how in the future, the Open Meetings Act may be modified based on our experiences through COVID. That all being said, we will go on to our next item of business, which is the annual financial audit approval. So every year after we've presented the audit, we actually have to do a board motion to approve it, to accept it as a district. And then the district actually has to send that on to the state by the end of, Ginger, is it October or November? I don't remember.
This year, they've actually pushed the date back to December first, but we will
Oh.
right away since it's all audited and hopefully.
Historically, it was at the end of October. So it was always a rush to try to get everything pulled together to make sure that we didn't violate state law. And so as we had a presentation this evening from Jamie Rivette, that is actually the report that will go to the state for presenting. So is there a motion to accept the presented annual financial audit report for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty fiscal year?
So moved.
Second, Wheeling.
Was Brandon moved and Wheeling seconded? Are there any further questions? Sheila, roll call please.
Okay, Wheeling Pangle.
Yes.
Tim Odiker.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman.
Yes.
Brandon McQueen.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy. Yes.
That motion is unanimously approved. And so Ginger forwarded on. The next item on the agenda is the Recreation Authority Resolution Approval. Jen, I'll let you speak to this one.
In your board packet this evening, you have a memorandum and a resolution from me. The resolution is from the Aquatic Center Subcommittee, which we had a presentation from that group back on September seventeenth. It was a joint presentation between our board, the Mount Pleasant City Commissioners and the Board of Union Township. Joining us this evening is Lisa Diaz on our panel. We also do have Nancy Ridley and Mark Sutler in attendance. If you have any questions regarding the recommendation, we're asking that our board approve the resolution to begin the process of forming a recreation authority.
One other item I'd like to notice is the bylaws that are in your packet. As the recommended bylaws were actually published in Saturday, Sunday's Morning Sun. It took an entire page. And so it has been publicly shown out there. So everyone can see what we're, this is. I'd also like to thank everyone who attended that meeting. It was very interesting having a three-way board meeting with the three main government entities in Mount Pleasant and learning about the Aquatic Center and then moving forward. Are there any questions regarding the Aquatic Center Resolution Proposal? I'm not hearing any. Is there a motion to accept the resolution to adopt the Articles of Incorporation of the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority for Isabella County, Michigan?
So moved Sheila.
Second, Amy.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Again, so the public knows we actually have the resolution and all of the bylaws in our board packet this evening. Thank you Nancy and Lisa for attending this evening. And thank you for all the work that you've done. And so we have a motion and a second. So Sheila, there will have to be a roll call vote.
Wheeling Pangle. Yes. Tim Odiker.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman.
Yes.
Brandon McQueen.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy. Yes.
The motion is unanimously approved. That's very exciting, ladies and gentlemen. It's a big step forward for our community. Exciting. You everyone.
I just also wanted to thank Mark Sittleher from Union Township. He did a ton of work with this process too. So we're very thankful for all their support.
Yes, very much. The next item on the agenda is the high school graduation requirement recommendation. As you may remember, last board meeting, I think it was Jeff who presented to us the modifications that the high school was recommending to help us align with our COVID world today and the current graduating classes. There is a memorandum in the board packet. Jen, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
No, just we're revisiting again the idea that students that were in high school last spring did not have the opportunity to earn as many credits as they typically would. So we're asking that you adjust the required number of credits for the classes of two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Those are the three classes. Those are the three classes that were in high school during the pandemic last spring.
Is there a motion to accept for those three years, 21, 22, and 23, to have the ability to have the required credits to graduate move to 25 credits from 27.5? So moved.
Somebody seconded.
Amy did.
Okay. Tim may be frozen, we may have to give him just a minute, there he is.
Okay.
So did she, did Brandon give that?
Yeah, we got a second too, so.
Okay, sorry about that. The, any further questions? Roll call, please, Sheila.
Wheeling Pangle?
Yes.
Tim Odiker?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Motion unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is Retirement Administrator Linda, or Jen.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we would like to honor Susan Renaud's retirement. Susan has been with the district 26 years, and I believe she even has time in education beyond our district. We are going to be interviewing to replace Susan, and her staff has been actively involved in providing us with some comments that show just how loved she is and that she's going to be a very, very difficult shoes to fill. But we'd like you to honor Susan's retirement tonight. Thank you for your time in our district.
Is there a motion to accept the retirement of Ms. Susan Renaud and to extend our great gratitude for everything that she's done for the district and wish her happiness in retirement?
So moved, Amy. Second, Sheila. Okay, Wheeling. I'm just getting in there because I have to get in there anyway, so.
Got it, Deb? Any further questions? Roll call vote, please, Sheila.
Wheeling Pangle?
Yes.
Tim Odiker?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Motion approved and with great appreciation to enjoy retirement. That's an exciting step forward. The next item on the agenda is retirement from certified staff. Linda?
Yes, we would like to honor Cindy Onika. This is year 30 for Cindy, and she will be a mid-year retirement from Mary Maguire. She spent most of her career teaching 4th grade at Maguire. And then we also have Kelly Peterson. She will also be retiring this fall, and she has been with the district 27 years.
Again, two long time standing educators in our district who are retiring. Is there a motion to accept the retirements of Ms. Cindy Onika and Ms. Kelly Peterson? So moved.
I'll second, Sheila.
Just a motion, Brandon, second, Sheila. Any further questions? Roll call, Sheila.
Wheeling Pangle?
Yes.
Tim Odiker?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
I didn't have a question, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to put it in. These, the 4th grade teacher, do we have a replacement? Was she actively teaching?
We actually knew about her retirement well in advance, and so it worked out very nicely that she was able to cover maternity leave this fall, so that we had a certified teacher in place. And then once our, our teacher is returning from her leave, she, they're kind of, they work together through conferences, and the other teacher will be coming back to us very soon. And then we have to post for Mrs. Peterson's vacancy.
Thank you.
Well, I am back, I must be freezing a lot this evening. So motion is approved, just to verify that. The next item on the agenda is resignation.
Yes, last but not least, we have a resignation of Heather Ellenwood. Heather has been in our music department. She has worn several hats, teaching vocal music and orchestra and band. She is leaving to another adventure for, with her family. And also the resignation of Blair Smalley. Blair has been a school social worker, and her family is taking her to a new location as well.
Is there a motion to accept the resignations of Heather Ellenwood and Blair Smalley?
Motion moved, sweetie.
Second, Amy.
Are there any further questions? Roll call.
Wheeling Pangle?
Yes.
Tim Odiker?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Motion approved, and with great appreciation for your time here and your commitment to the kids, we thank you very much and wish you good luck in your next endeavors. The next item on the agenda are donations. Jen?
We have two different donations this evening that we are asking you to accept. First is a donation of six books from the Charge Syndrome Research Club at Central Michigan University. The book is called Haya Mariah, and it's about a student dealing with charge syndrome. And they've donated one book to each of our elementary buildings. That donation is estimated in value at $74.75. Our second donation is another large donation, a second large donation of school supplies, notebooks, binders, glue, crayon, pencils, pretty much everything you can need from the Walmart Corporation. And the value of that donation is $5,000. So this is a second huge donation from Walmart to our district. We're just incredibly grateful for their generosity.
Yes, that is quite amazing, that's excellent. Thank you very much, Walmart, and thank you, the Charge Research Club. Is there a motion to accept these two donations to Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
Amy?
Second. Go ahead, Sheila.
Wheeling Pangle? It's Tim frozen.
No, I'm here.
Okay, so Wheeling?
Sorry, sorry.
Tim Odiker?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Motion approved, and with great appreciation to Walmart for their second large donation and for the Charge Syndrome Research Haya Mariah books. That's great community involvement, thank you everyone. So the next item on the agenda is the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. And as everyone may remember, every 30 days, we have to have this represented to us as a board. And so we have actually added this as a whole subject within our agenda. So there's going to be information that is shared. There will be the talk about the plan itself. And then there will be the opportunity for the public to talk to these, this information and plan. And then after we hear from the public, there will be the opportunity for us to vote on the approval of the plan. But I also wanted just to highlight, the next item on the agenda is also an opportunity for the citizens of the heart taking part to have any comments on any other agenda item you'd like to have. So there's actually going to be two opportunities. So our first public comment is really geared toward the COVID-19 Learning Plan. And I will pass this on to Jen now.
Yep, well, good evening, everyone. Just before I share my presentation and get started, we have a wide variety of information to share with you this evening. I have different administrators that have joined us that will share their portion of the plan. And I'll go through some of the beginning information with regards to our reconfirmation information meeting and that requirement. I think a couple of things are really important to preface as we get started with this report. First of all, as we move through this process and as we look at our return to school plan, we have to continue to remember that safety is our top priority. Over the last three weeks, we have had two incidents with positive COVID cases that are related to our schools or affiliated in our schools. And I really just can't say enough about how well our students and staff have managed our return to school plan. When I look at the number of positive cases in our school buildings and the small number of students and staff members that were considered close contacts by the Central Michigan Health Department and that were required to quarantine, it's quite remarkable. If we did not have such rigid protocols and processes in place, I think we would have been in a completely different situation. So we know that face-to-face education, five days a week for our students is what's best. But we also know that when we're living in a world of a pandemic, it's not feasible for us to be able to offer that for all students all the time. So I'm going to go through the information that we've gathered for you this evening. We'll give you lots of opportunities to ask questions. And then like Tim mentioned, there'll be the opportunity for public comment, and then we'll come back for a board vote. But I hope you all see this as really our effort to keep our students and staff safe and then also to meet the needs of our families of our community. So I'm going to share my screen here again. And I'm going to try to get. Okay. So we continue to use the same format of a presentation, so it's familiar to everyone. This is the reconfirmation meeting report. Again, this is the information that we are required to report every 30 days. So our original report that we approved back in September was submitted to the Michigan Department of Education on October 1st. So we're a little bit less than the 30 days, and I will show you how some of our sets of data are a little bit incomplete at this point. But we're really focused on making sure that every 30 days, we're coming to the board, we're coming to our public, and we're having this conversation. So it, with this first month, it really ends up being more at like three weeks than a full month. But we wanted to make sure that we met this timeframe. After our meeting this evening, we will continue to do work on this report, and it will be submitted again to the Michigan Department of Education through Greshit Isabella R E S D on October 30th. So just to remind you that this Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan and this process that we're going through was created via the Return to Learn legislation. This established a process for schools to update and review our return to school plan that we created and the board approved in August of 2020. And this has three basic parts. One is to look at our educational goals, which we did. One is to hold a progress report by February 1st, where we'll look at benchmark data. And then the final one is to hold the monthly reconfirmation meetings. This meeting is the first of such for our district. So what we're going to do first is look at the data that we are required to report. This is data coming from Power School, and in most cases, we're looking at three weeks worth of data. What we're tracking is the number of two-way communication that is recorded between teacher and student. The standard that the Michigan Department of Education has set for us is that they want us to have at least two, two-way communications with all students every week. So again, I'll click on this report format here. So this is a format that we've shared with you before. So this is the reconfirmation meeting period for October 1st through October 16th, which was last Friday. The information highlighted in blue is the section that I will complete after we have board approval this evening, if we have board approval this evening, regarding our return to school plan. The next section will be where I will document any public comments that we receive at this meeting. So again, this report isn't entirely complete. We wanted to look at our two-way interaction rates for grade levels. And if you remember, when we first looked at these reports, there were a couple of different report formats. One was a very basic report format that met the letter of the law, but did not provide any additional information. When we worked with our administrators and our building leadership teams, we felt as though it was important to include information that was a little bit more specific, broken down by the kind of student, and then also broken down by grade level. So that's what we have for you this evening. The first chart that we have is our weekly two-way interaction rates for our students in grades developmental kindergarten through second grade. And you can see the two-way, so again, these are students that have met the requirement of two-way communication at least twice per week, and teachers have recorded that into Power School. Those are the reports that will be pulled by the Michigan Department of Education. So you can see, we've broken it down for you here with all students, our students that are 100% remote in the Oilers Online program, and then our students that are not 100% remote, which is face-to-face. So when you think of an example, what is a two-way communication? A two-way communication for a remote student could be joining the live lesson for the morning meeting. It could be having the teacher email the student and have the student responding to the email. It could be a teacher assigning work and the student turning in the work, and then the teacher providing feedback. So it's the back and forth between students and teachers that we're calculating here. For our face-to-face students, since the standard is two, two-way communication per week, one would assume that as long as they're present at least two days each week, those rates would be 100% for those students. We go down further, we're looking at rate, interaction rates for grades third through fifth. And again, we're looking at the breakdown of all students, students that are in the Oilers Online program, so 100% remote, and then students that are face-to-face. This data is incomplete. In addition to everything else that our teachers are doing this year, entering this data into our Power School system is timely. It takes teachers a lot of time to do that. And so what most of our buildings have done is said, once you have your data sheets that they're tracking by hand, completed on Friday, those are turned into the office, and they're, they're put into Power School by Wednesday of the next week. Or teachers are just given until Wednesday of the next week to make sure that all those contacts are in the system. So we do not have full data for the week that just ended last Friday for this grade level. Again, looking at the weekly two-way interaction rates for grades 6 through 8, breaking down the average of all students, students that are 100% remote or students that are not 100% remote and are participating in the face-to-face programs. So you can see our teachers are doing an excellent job of connecting with our students. And then finally, we have the high school, grades 9 through 12. Our issue with getting complete data there is a little bit different, where those teachers began tracking the two-way communication rates in Power School on Monday, October 5th, which that was technically count week. So these two, this tracking of two-way communication does coincide with the way we have to count virtual students. So they're missing that first week of data, which we'll work on getting and cleaning up. So again, looking at all students' participation rate, the participation rate for those students that are in the Oilers Online program, and then those students, the participation rate for those students that are 100% in a face-to-face program. If we go back now to the return to school plan and some general information, just to give you a framework of what we're talking about when we start to talk about the second trimester, it's important to know that the second trimester begins on Monday, November 16. So any plans we're discussing this evening might be different than what we're currently doing. These are plans that we would implement beginning on November 16. Second trimester goes through March 5th. So that's our 12-week span that we're focused on at this point. Throughout all of our buildings, safety remains the top priority. And all of our COVID protocols that we've discussed earlier in August are still in place. Masks are required at all times for all grade levels. Classrooms at the elementary level are disinfected every four hours or after a class transition at the secondary level. All buildings are deep cleaned on a regular basis. As Josh and Ginger have reported, we've been able to use some of the COVID funds that we received to purchase additional Clorox 360 machines. So now all of our buildings have the ability to deep clean on a So now all of our buildings have the ability to deep clean on a regular basis. Our protocols on the bus remain the same, the same. Students sanitize as they get on the bus, they're required to wear masks and we keep them distant as, with as much space as possible. Throughout the second trimester, our support for special education students and at-risk students remains the same. We're strongly committed to meeting the needs of those students. And like I said earlier, we're really focused on providing instructional models that work, that keep our students safe and that meet the needs of our families. Excuse me, we are focused on smaller class sizes. You'll hear from our administrators this evening regarding the return of some of our Euler online students. Fortunately, we did not have as many Oilers online students that have indicated they want to return to face-to-face. So we still are able to keep that class size relatively small. And we are still asking our families to maintain that commitment to screening their students before they leave for school and not sending them to school if they are sick. And I included in here just a link to a document that, that I really think is nice for families, which is the refrigerator reminders that goes through all the signs and symptoms of COVID, health screening and tips for cleaning and hygiene, social distancing and mask wearing. And it's just a nice reminder for families that every Mount Pleasant public school student must be screened for COVID symptoms every day by their parents or guardian before leaving for school. This tab goes up and I can't get back to it. I apologize. Okay. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we believe based on our experiences of the last three weeks, the instructional models that we are offering for our students and staff are keeping our folks safe. We're now going to move into looking at the kindergarten through fifth grade plan. And I will invite Diane Falcetta and Mercy Stout to unmute their microphones and share those details. Thanks for joining us, Diana Mercy.
Hi. I'm going to go through the slide with you on behalf of my administrative colleagues in the DK V buildings. And the things that we have bulleted on this sheet, we also got feedback from parents and also from teachers. So the goal of Try Two for the K5 buildings, mostly K2 because at this point, the three fives are not blended. But for the K2 buildings, the goal for the upcoming try is to end the blend class, blend classroom rosters for the majority of the K2 teachers and students. We feel like this can be done without hiring any new teachers. And that would be done simply by taking current teachers and moving students that are online already with that teacher and then also having to move some face-to-face learners to face-to-face classrooms. So this would however, require moving students to different teachers for the next trimester, a certain number of them. It could also happen for both online Oilers and the face-to-face learners that they could maybe possibly have, a small amount of them would have different teachers. The Oilers online students may have a teacher that is located in a different building other than their assigned homeschool building, which is currently happening. Now, some of my second grade students and Ganyard's second grade students attend online Oilers with a teacher at bowels. So it would also require that we do some more of that. The choice for remaining in online or Euler or returning to face-to-face again, like John mentioned in the earlier slide, would be a trimester, trimester commitment for our Mount Pleasant families. We had a survey that we sent home to all the parents and that survey, I believe, is closed at this point. And the overall survey results from the K5 Euler online families indicated that most families wanted to remain online for the second trimester. In order for us to end the blend and move students to online learning with one teacher taking care of all of that would require that the six feet social distancing requirement for the K5 classrooms would need to be reduced. And we're thinking of more of a three to five because we will be inviting some of the online Oilers that wish to return back to face-to-face learning. We still will strongly recommend that masks remain required in all buildings throughout Try Two and of course, limit visitors into the building. That would also remain in effect. So those are our recommendations for the board in regard to our K2 blended classrooms. I know that our teachers are such, such hard workers. And from parent-teacher conferences, we got lots of great feedback from parents. So they're doing an amazing job. But as Jennifer mentioned, the two-way communication, the double planning, trying to keep up that pace is just not really feasible. And we want to tweak our plan to make it even more beneficial to online families and our face-to-face. And also keeping in mind the mental health of our teachers also is important to us.
I think the other thing that we could add, thank you Diane, with this is when we look at our three-five classrooms, the biggest concern that we heard was in regards to the size of the virtual classrooms. And when we break those numbers down, we will be able to allow several Oilers online students to return to face-to-face. If we are able to soften the social distance that's in our classrooms so that we can use as much space as possible, more like Diane said, in the three to five feet range. That will allow us to bring those students back face-to-face, which is what their families have requested. And then it will also reduce the class size for our third, our grade teachers so that they don't have such large classes as they do currently. Would you like us to keep going or would you like to be able to answer questions about each section as we go?
Let's get all the information out there first and then come back.
Okay, great. So the next area is our middle, middle school plan for sixth through eighth grade. And I will invite Darby Weaver to share this plan with you. Thanks Darby.
Thanks Jen. I want to start just with a couple of clarifying pieces before we get into our plan for second trimester. I just wanted to be able to explain kind of what a day in the life of a middle school teacher looks like here at the middle school with our cohort model. We're very happy with our cohort model. But I think we need to understand that our teachers currently are teaching five straight hours or five straight class periods in the morning with face-to-face students. And that has a very limited break in between those five class periods due to not having much passing time because we're very structured with our passing time this year. Some of our teachers teach multiple preps or subjects. And in the afternoon, they do have a lunch. But after that, they have two hours for online instruction and very clear online instruction expectations. And close to 75% of our staff don't have a prep period in the afternoon due to us needing teachers to teach additional sections of online. So we do have our teachers really teaching two, two different modes of, you know, education. And the reason behind that here at the middle school is when you get into the secondary level, our teachers have to be highly qualified by each subject, subject. And so we would have to hire one teacher per grade, you know, per subject. And then additional teachers would have to be hired for electives and additional classes. So we would actually be looking at probably like six to eight teachers needing to be hired in order for us to actually run an online program and a face-to-face program separately. So I wanted to just make sure that we were clear on some of the things that we are doing here at the middle school and some reasons why we can't really have that and the blend in our building. So our suggestion for second trimester though, is to continue our cohort model. We are having a lot of success with it and we are able to do some of that contact tracing and really be able to narrow down who our kids are with throughout the day. For our second trimester, based on our survey, we have 50 students wanting to return from online, which leaves us roughly about 200 students online for second trimester. We feel that we can still fit the 50 students into our building for second trimester with the six-foot social distancing. But we would like a little bit of flexibility with that so that we can guarantee our teachers will be teaching in their own classrooms. But if additional students enroll, there could have to be some movement where teachers would have to teach in the cafeteria or in the band room or gyms. But we would really like to have some flexibility with the six feet. So our teachers can be in their own classrooms with their own technology. We are also asking, due to what I just explained with our teachers teaching five straight face-to-face class periods and then their online instruction in the afternoon, our teachers really need some time. And that has been a very clear need in two different staff surveys. One that came from central office towards the end of September and then one that was actually just given this morning to the staff. And we are requesting for the second trimester that our Wednesdays at the middle school, kind of like the high school, becomes online learning for all of our students at the middle school. That's something we're asking for to be discussed tonight. Based on two different surveys from the staff, we would be using that time to devote directly for the Oilers online students. We would still be teaching the face-to-face students, but it would be some time for them to continue to create more effective online instruction. We'd have some professional development, some strategies. They would be have some time to develop and execute live instruction. Also, like Jen kind of mentioned with the two-way communication, but this online instruction has brought a lot of additional documentation that has been added for our staff. For example, two-way communication, our attendance is different, grading, and then along with preparing for it. Communications with families and students. Also, we brought up some things where maybe we could have some small group meetings with those kids who are struggling online and really help them kind of with some of the motivation piece. Because we do have some students who are not as motivated to be, to be learning online or learning at the moment. Also, a nice day for some cleaning. It also helps with transition for some of our groups that have to go directly online. We just had a situation where one of our teams was online and it would have been nice to have a little bit of time beforehand to make sure that everybody knew exactly what should be expected of them when they're, when they're all online. And then also, like Diane mentioned as well, the mental health and self-care for our staff. All of these things, again, have been shared from the staff that it is, it is really like to doing two jobs in one and we really are running two buildings in one. And from a staff survey today, as of 2:30 PM, 77% of the Mount Pleasant Middle School staff are in support of Wednesday online instruction for all. And then the same thing from the staff survey that was given at the end of September, that our staff really at the middle school needs time in order to make this transition of having the face-to-face and online be as effective, effective as we know that we can make it.
Thank you Darby. We will move right into the high school model. And Jen, I will welcome you to speak on it. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I want to first say that we've had a successful start at the high school and the success is due to the hard work that our teachers, our parents and our students have put in. And like I said, to see how hard our work, teachers are working is, is amazing. Some of the highlights that we've had so far is our students and teachers have done a great job complying with all of the safety protocols and social distancing guidelines. Our face-to-face students were so happy to be back and have been working hard during their face-to-face days. It hasn't been without challenge though. And some of those are, you know, the engagement, limited engagement during the non-face-to-face times for our hybrid students. And also some of the online students that we haven't engaged sufficiently. And so those are some of the things we're still working on. Our plan moving forward would be to continue our hybrid model with the online option, continue to limit visitors in the building and follow all of the safety protocols that we've done. Just a rehash of our current plan. Students that are face-to-face or in our hybrid have, are either in a blue cohort or a gold cohort. And two days a week, they have face-to-face. And one day on Wednesdays, they have a virtual day. And then two other days, they have remote learning, usually through Google Classroom. And we had 46 students out of our 400 Oilers online that would like to return to the hybrid model. And we think we can have them come back safely and still maintain all of our social distancing protocols even with these students.
Thank you Jen. Let's go to the plan for Grasset Isabella Technical Education Center and Mary Kay Volks. Thanks for being here, Mary Kay.
Yes, thanks for having me. So overall compliance with our rules, new rules and safety protocols, really from everyone, has been very positive. Our first week back from school, we welcomed students. Of course, we went over the sanitizing process and how you come in the building and what you need to do as far as hand sanitizing and so forth. And now it's become a habit. As I look, as the kids enter from the building, from their buses, they immediately go in to our vestibule and hand sanitizer's on the wall now. So they squirt their stuff and they go on to class, which is really neat to see. Students that attend face-to-face want to be here. They're giving great effort and academically progressing. So one thing I wanted to note that within our melting pot of our nine different districts and that make up our consortium, we've had zero positive COVID cases to date. So I wanted to note that, that's, that's pretty, pretty awesome. Our teachers are continually putting our students first, trying to give them best education experience possible. It certainly required extra time after hours and preparation. A challenge is definitely the blended classes. Juggling in one class, a face-to-face, virtual and multiple hybrid models. The teachers are consistently learning how to manage this new delivery variation of curriculums, helping with social emotional needs of their students and monitoring the attendance that Darby and Jen have referenced too. In conversations I've had with our teachers, keeping the virtual students engaged is, is a big challenge. Many online students are having a hard time adjusting to online learning, managing their emails, sorting, prioritizing. And this has been a lesson in itself. So I'll reiterate that my other two colleagues have said they need time, teachers need time, time to connect, time to be more adaptive. And so we also are looking and asking if we could possibly modify our face-to-face model for second trimester by, for Mount Pleasant High School for full Wednesdays. So no students on Wednesdays will allow teachers time to dedicate to their virtual learnings, which would include both hybrid and fully online from all of our districts. Because all of our teachers have more than just Oilers online, they have every district online. Give them time to attend to student remediation needs, time for additional recording expectations that Darby spoke with and communication with parents. Another suggestion for support would be additional PD on our Google platform capabilities. Collaboration with colleagues and district experts to build on effective online instruction. We would like to work on offering opportunities for growth in this area and dedicated time on those Wednesdays will allow us to do that as well. At this time, we don't know the exact number of online students that may move to face-to-face. Jen spoke of 46 from Mount Pleasant High School, but we are waiting to see what area schools may also join into the face-to-face, which would bring up some maybe softening of that six-foot or the distancing requirement. We need to be a little bit flexible on that. Perhaps if the initial students are heavy in one particular program and not spread out. And then lastly, they requiring of masks and limiting visitors would remain in effect for second trimester.
Thanks Mary Kay. As part of this presentation, we also wanted to make sure that you knew that at this point, we are not recommending any changes for the Mount Pleasant Community Education Programs. That includes adult education, the Way Oasis Program, day treatment and the programs that we offer at Isabella County Correctional Facility. We are still offering We are still offering programs that are both face-to-face and virtual for all of those students. We're following all of the COVID-related protocols that were reported to you in August. And at the next board meeting on November 2nd, Kim Funnel and members of her staff will be here to provide a complete update on the programs that are being offered there. But we wanted to make sure that you knew that at this point, we're not recommending any change in programs there for second trimester. And again, additional additional points to consider. We have some work to do to review and finalize our enrollment numbers. If you remember from first trimester, we had just over 2,000 students that requested face-to-face programming and right around 1,200 students that asked for the Oilers online program. As families realized that their students weren't as successful online as they hoped they would be, they did ask to return. We have been very open and very flexible with those students, getting as many back in as possible, knowing that we believe it is best for students to be face-to-face. We need to continue to follow up with our Oilers online students that we've not yet heard from. We need to either get a commitment for from them for the next 12 weeks, or we need them to say that they're coming back face-to-face. We also need to look at these potential changes to our programs and negotiate any contractual implications with MPEA. That's a process that we went through in August, and again, we'll need to revisit that. And then we do need to finalize our schedules at all buildings, but especially Mount Pleasant High School and GI Tech, where students could essentially have five new classes that start on November 16th. We need to have some time to make sure we can get those schedules in place for them. We also want to continue to work on additional resources for our staff and students. You heard the request for professional development. We've had a strong commitment to professional development to help our teachers perform better in a virtual environment, whether that be through a communication by design, a consulting group that we've contracted with out of the Grand Rapids area, or even our in-house experts working with things like Google Classroom to make sure that our teachers are prepared and know what they need to do. We need to continue to do that. We did receive our shipment and supply of additional Chromebooks for families so that if we have a family with multiple children and they only have one Chromebook, we do now have the capability to provide additional Chromebooks. We also purchased a supply of classroom technology intended to make teaching in a virtual environment easier for our teachers. So simple things like webcams, wireless keyboards and mice, longer cords so that teachers can be more mobile throughout their classrooms as they're teaching. And as we reported at our last board meeting, we are working on our Wi-Fi network replacement project. And we anticipate that that project will be complete over winter break so that we will have a stronger, more reliable network going into January. So we are available this evening. All of our administrative leaders are here on the meeting as well as Linda and Ginger and myself to help answer any questions that you might have regarding our return to school plan for second trimester.
So to work through this, why don't we do it kind of by grade section if that would be helpful? And so let's start with the older kids because they seem to have less requirements for changes that they're requesting. So let's talk with the last group, which is the tech. And a lot, you know, talking about the their request primarily for the Wednesday to be a virtual Wednesday, much like the rest of the high school. That being said, because it sounds like the high school doesn't want to change any of their program currently. And so does any board members have anything that they would like to talk about regarding? Mary Kay, it sounds like to more parallel the structure to the high schools for the tech center seems to be a request.
How is that going to affect all the other schools that are going already going back five days a week? And now all of a sudden, the kids who are coming to the tech center aren't coming there. So how does that affect all the other schools that send kids there if Mount Pleasant all of a sudden decides to not have them there on Wednesday?
We have had conversations currently, besides Mount Pleasant, Shepherd does not send students on Wednesdays. And we have recently had conversation with Alma. They are looking to possibly do the same. Jennifer, you may be able to echo that or give a little bit more information, but they have talked about it in the superintendent's meetings.
Yep, we definitely have. And Mary Kay is right. This is something that Alma Public Schools is looking at as well. So if that happens, that means that there wouldn't, Alma would actually close their vocational center on Wednesdays. So I think it's important to keep in mind that during that time, our teacher, our teachers would still be providing virtual instruction to students. So if you have, you have a group of students, say, for example, that are coming to a vocational class from St. Louis, working with St. Louis Public Schools, they can find a spot there during that time where students can work on their tech center assignments in a virtual capacity. So it's not that they wouldn't have work and assignments that they could be doing. They just wouldn't be traveling to Mount Pleasant to do those assignments. And I think everyone understands, you know, I think earlier in a board meeting, we talked about what other districts are doing and really across the board between the nine of us, pretty much any instructional model that you can think of, someone's trying it. We've got early releases, we've got late starts, we've got days off, we've got all sorts of things happening. So we also have a very positive relationship with all of our districts and they respect and understand how challenging this is. So it won't be perfect, but I think that they're on board and willing to work with us if this is the route we go.
Okay, Jen, well, I got you. I have one other question. It's how many of the cases that we've had, how many were in school transmission? Any of them?
Well, COVID is community spread. So we cannot say for certain that anyone, we have had two cases, that any of those cases actually got or contracted COVID in our school buildings. In fact, from the students that were around both cases and the staff members that are around both cases, it's likely that they did not contract COVID in our buildings because we only had one person in each instance that tested positive. So you would think, and I'm not a scientist, but you would.
No, but that's good to know.
Right, right. So if they did contract in our building, it would make sense that there would be multiple positive cases. But everyone else affiliated with the two cases that tested, their test results have come back negative. Now, this group is still in quarantine. So there's still potential there. It's back and no one else did test positive from that.
Awesome, thank you.
I do have a question. I was hoping, Mary Kay, you can maybe explain to us a little bit how the teachers are managing the different, the blend, basically. Are they turning on their camera during a live face-to-face? Are they doing two props? Like you mentioned, there were multiple models and I was hoping you could expand.
Sure. They're doing all of the above, depending on, really, they're doing all the above. So we have the hybrid model from the high school. So you'll have, you know, two different groups. The Shepherd model is that they don't send on Wednesdays. So on Wednesdays, the Shepherd students would be virtual all the other days face-to-face. We have online from every school as well. They do all they can. They're doing a phenomenal job trying to keep up with all of that. Hence the reason why we really would, they need that Wednesday to be able to give more attention to the online students that they feel, I think, are the ones that are probably getting the least of all for matters of what it is. That's just how it's ending up.
All right. So do we know if some of these online students are receiving synchronous live instruction or is mostly at this point recorded?
There are some, yes. Most of the time it's recorded or they might meet with them during a prep, if they have a prep hour, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Sure, a Wednesday would certainly help with that.
Yeah.
Mary Kay, don't we also have two districts that have early release days? So their students' time in the afternoon is shortened. So the students are still coming. That's is that in Alma, that's five days a week that they're shortened or?
Yeah. Alma Public Schools, they are with us for about an hour in the afternoon. It's not great, but doing the best that we can with that face-to-face, but about an hour in the afternoon.
Now, are all the Mount Pleasant students that are involved in the tech center, do they come every day that you're open? Even though they're only a Monday, Tuesday cohort, would they still come Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday if they could? Or are they limited only to whatever cohort they're in?
No, they are allowed to come however they wish to come. They have to come on their cohort days. And that's a mixed bag. You know, some of the programs will have a little bit more attendance on their, I'll say off days or on their online days than others. It's a mixed bag.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say that what I've been hearing around the community is that the having Wednesdays off is one of the wisest decisions school districts have been making. And it's just one of the best things that the teachers could get help with, give them support. So I definitely support it. And I think teachers and district that don't have that are hurting really bad.
And I would doubt if we're discussing it for our tech center. And I know we want to keep the conversation separate from formal models, but I would argue for a district-wide Wednesday off because I'm guessing even our K through five, which I think is the only ones for which we didn't have the Wednesday off, could probably really benefit from that extra time, especially since like the three to five still have probably pretty large classes in the virtual environments, just to continue that conversation. But we can come back to it when we get to the K through five.
So is it a general consensus for the tech center that the Wednesday off probably would be something that the board would be in favor of?
Yeah, I think everybody gains.
And I'm seeing nods. So. So Jen, would it be easier for us to do approvals of all those, each component? Or do you think we should do it as a chunk? Or how do you think we should move forward with all of our different models?
So I think that, you know, ultimately, if the board decides that they could make a recommendation or a motion that would approve everything at once, I think that would be fine. But I think we also need to remember that we need to take a break from this conversation and have public comment and then come back to the approval process. But but I do, I think it would be appropriate to address Weleen's comment about the Wednesdays. And Marcy or Diane could also join in with this because we have had extensive conversation about Wednesdays and what that would look like at the elementary level. And so you are right, we are requesting that Wednesday is a virtual day for all of our secondary students. So that's part of Darby's request, Mary Kay's request, and of course, the high school already has that as part of their program. But I think that we purposely at the K-5 level are not requesting that. And I think that there are some reasons why we believe that we can manage that group a little bit differently and that we can still provide our teachers with that time and flexibility. We did talk about the potential of looking at the next five months and looking at perhaps one teacher work day a month to build into the calendar to give families more notice rather than a consistent every day or every week having one day. So I don't know, Marcy or Diane, would either of you like to comment on the idea of that K-5, one day off a week?
Right. I think too, that we talked a lot about the support staff that we already have in place and giving them extra support. The childcare is a big issue for families since that age group of student isn't able to care for themselves and a lot of daycares are full. So it puts working families at a disadvantage and having to find childcare. So that's one of the things that makes it more difficult for that age level.
I would also add that it really, consistency is so important with our littlest kids, our five to seven-year-olds. They need the consistency of being with their peers, being with their teacher, and having that same routine every single day. I think we, we kind of shoot ourselves in the foot sometimes when we have the days off. It's a real challenge to get them back on track the next day. And I think it's just, I think as we look at that age group and what they need on a daily basis socially and emotionally as well, we feel like we want them in school. And then, like Jen mentioned, we would certainly appreciate if there was one day a month that we could have for our teachers to do planning and whatnot. But if we can end the blend in the majority of our rooms and keep our numbers where they are now, I feel like the one day a week is going to be a little bit much for the little ones.
I would concur that Mondays are a little rough in an elementary building after two days off. So as more consistent as we can be with their schedules, I agree 100%.
I appreciate what you're saying and I do see what you mean. My concern would be more from a teacher burnout. When we read letters Mrs. Irvin sent to the board, I mean, there's deep concerns for for the well-being of our teachers. That being said, it's true that if the blend goes away, I would hope that some of those deep challenges for the teachers would also be removed. I will have to say, just because I'm French, I have to, the French model for school has always been Wednesdays off, K through all the way to 12. And so maybe it doesn't bug me as much to think of a Wednesday day off. I mean, that's what I grew up with. And although I think it's true that stability is really important for those age groups, I think if it's constant, right, it's something that we get used to, like everything. But you know, that's an aside.
Yeah, we do have a lot of families who are just getting back to work and struggling financially. And I think that that would just put a bigger burden on on those families, those at-risk families. And I know in most of our elementaries, we have about 60% free and reduced. So some families are just getting back to work and getting some of that income coming. So like I said, we do have support staff that we put in place when they were doing blended and they're still Mount Pleasant hires. And I think we can use those, those peoples, you know, strategically to help with that overburdened part of the teaching.
So why don't we move on to the middle school conversation? And which was Darby helped us again. So it's Wednesday off is primarily the biggest shift. And then maybe some flexibility in some of the softening of the six-foot, correct?
I just want, really quickly and just reiterate that Wednesday is a virtual day. Wednesday is not a day off. It would be a day without students face-to-face. And I know I, I've said it probably 75 times today myself, but we have to get into that mindset that our teachers are still working, our students are still working, they're just not working together, working in different locations. But it still very much counts as a day of instruction. It just gives us everybody a different pace. So, sorry.
That's a very good comment.
My, my question, have you guys ever considered? Because the biggest complaint I'm hearing, I mean, aside from obviously parents want to send their kids back to school regularly, is that we have three different plans in three different schools. Is it, did the middle school ever consider just going back to the same thing that the high school's doing so that, that the busing and everything would, would work? I mean, going all day, you know, Monday and Tuesday half like the high school's doing as opposed to keep going with what you're doing right now?
The benefit of what we're doing right now is we can give our face-to-face kids five days of face-to-face instruction. And the high school's only giving two days of face-to-face instruction. And so we feel like the cohort model is more effective for our middle schools because we can actually give them five days of face-to-face instruction. And so to go to a hybrid, that could be a conversation, but it wouldn't be giving our students as much instruction as we can right now with the absolutely same social distancing and all of the safety pieces in place. So the biggest benefit, our kids are getting 45 to 50-minute class periods for five class periods, getting all their core face-to-face five days a week.
And I just, I actually wanted to speak on the cohort. I voted against the cohort and I just think it's important to acknowledge when maybe I made a decision, the way the case played out and the way that we were able to protect everybody. and the way that we were able to protect everybody and stop it from people from being potentially exposed from being first and I just wanted to acknowledge that the cohort system seems to be working well in that sense.
Thank you, I would agree.
I'm gonna second that, but I'm also gonna add that this was with a six feet social distancing. And my worry of removing that is that we remove a really important layer of protection. And there was recent news all over the country with some of the biggest outbreaks in the country in schools where we're system that we're masking without the social distancing. Now, I realize we're not saying no more social distancing, we're saying, you know, a little bit more flexibility. But I would worry that we're then maybe putting our students and teachers at risk. And then the additional question, since I have the mic, is whether we know what kind of support we have from our teachers to relax that role of the three to five feet, whether they are on board, because the last survey we saw from our staff, that was one of the biggest survey results, was that 50% of them were not comfortable with this. And so I wondered if we had, since we're talking specifically for the middle school, more information about this at this point.
We have, from that staff survey for the middle school one, it's very, very close of the question was if social distancing were adjusted to three to five feet in the face-to-face setting, I would still feel safe in school as long as the masks were still worn. And we had 28 individuals that either strongly disagreed or disagreed. And then we had 23 individuals that strongly agreed and agreed. So, so a 23 yes, 28 no. So so it is, it's not a glaring piece of that. One thing to point out, we can, right now, we can bring all of our online students back who want to, who have have said they'd like to come back face-to-face with keeping our six feet social distancing. I just know that we are constantly getting enrollees and moving in and moving out and our classrooms right now are set to have 20 20 desks in the room at six feet apart and just some of them are very, very close and I just think that as new enrollees come in, additional kids sometimes have to, they want to come back face-to-face in six weeks from now. We want to be able to offer that opportunity and have a little bit of flexibility, but I do understand your concerns. But currently, we can bring them all back with six feet.
I also, for the elementary, I know that our teachers were surveyed a while back, but I think that the knowing that the only way we can go forward with our plan is to ease that up a little bit because our elementaries are full. If you look at face-to-face six feet distance. So in order for our plan to bring back the, in my school, it's like 10, eight to 10 a grade level, we need to, we need that six foot relaxed a little bit to three to five.
See, I was worried about that because I and I echo the concern of lowering the social distancing regulations and especially in the face of, it being mentioned earlier that the health department has ruled a local emergency, state of emergency with this safety and it not spreading and being my number one concern. I don't think I'm to a point where I'm comfortable moving forward unless the social distancing got events.
I think too with the five, six, seven, eight-year-olds that we have, as much as we want to say that they're going to stay in their six-foot place. They're very active, they, we do a lot of brain breaks and moving and it is difficult for such active learners to stay in their six-foot place as well, so. It hasn't been an issue surprisingly enough, the masks. As a majority, kids are wearing them, they're wearing them well, they're getting used to them, they have them on their lanyards, they're not losing them. But keeping them six feet, it's like herding cats sometimes, it's very difficult to keep them socially distanced. They're just such social little beings.
I would agree with Diane, we're having a struggle with that same thing. If you look at what a five or six-year-old's day looks like, it's a lot of hands-on, it's a lot of movement. And they're doing great with the masks. I was nervous about the mask-wearing and that has actually gone very well. Obviously, we have reminders throughout the day and we have to replace masks that are on the bathroom floor and whatnot. But other than that, our kids are, they remember and when you say mask up, they mask up. And, you know, we are social distancing in the hallways, we are social distancing, lining up for specials, we are, we have our lunch spread out quite significantly. And so in a classroom with those 20 kids, they're five and six and seven-year-olds and it's hard for them to understand that they would have to stay in their little circle of six feet apart from their friends and we haven't had any positive cases in the elementary. We're being diligent about our room cleaning and our hand sanitizing. We are going through a lot of hand soap and so we can tell that the kids are following all of those guidelines and the teachers are constantly on them about that. So I feel like the the six-foot thing is not our biggest concern at this moment, as long as we continue with the sanitizing and the mask-wearing that we're doing, we feel like that is probably the top priority as compared to the social distancing.
I'll add too that the research that I've been reading is showing that this age group are not typically super-spreaders. So A, they don't typically get, if they do get the virus, they don't get as sick or don't get sick from it and they don't tend to spread from the reports and the research that I've been reading. They don't tend to be the spreaders that the older kids would be.
Absolutely.
I, I'm gonna disagree on that to some extent. There's pretty good evidence pointing to actually the opposite. That's fairly recent, I'm happy to share that too with you, Sheila. And so while they might not get as sick, they actually are spreading pretty effectively. And so I would really, and you know, again, from a concern of a staff, I'm gonna, again, I don't mean to switch the conversation to K through fifth as we were talking about the the middle school first, but I'd love if we have the information for K through five, how our teachers are feeling about removing the six feet. I don't know if we have that information specifically for them, but that would be a piece of information to add.
Let's resolve our middle school first and then we'll go on to those questions and then then to try to keep it chunked and not overlapped too much because the models are very different. And so to try to keep our conversations. And so Darby in general, the six foot is not a requirement, it is something that would be a benefit and something that's an absolute that you could accommodate. And your primary thing that you're looking to modify is the Wednesday virtual holiday for everyone.
Yes, and then if the flexibility is discussed at the elementary level and of course allowed at the elementary level, I'd like to be in on some of that flexibility. But if, if it's not, then we can be fine with the six feet social distancing. But I would like to request the Wednesdays to become online learning for all.
Okay, thank you. So do most of board members feel comfortable with the online learning Wednesdays for the middle school?
Tim, I just have a question. The, in Darby's presentation, you just said that it would be that you are looking for maybe flexibility with the six foot. Are you having a specific number? Or is it just kind of open to interpretation?
I mean, I would say, I mean, I think that probably three to five feet is a really good range that we discussed as a whole, like administrative staff, but in our building for the middle school, I mean, I think probably even like four to five feet would be something I would need, but it wouldn't even have to be in every single room. It's just if one room is, our cohort is all based on their math level. And so if I get a student who needs to return at a certain math level and they need to be in that cohort, it's just if I already have 20 students in there, I can, I can move the teacher's class to a larger place like the cafeteria or the gym or the music room, but that's not the most effective for the teachers. And so I was trying to ask for, if I could get a little bit of that flexibility, three to five feet or even four to five, four to six, whatever, then I would hopefully not have to actually uproot a teacher and their students to go to a larger space. Because again, I'm really trying to help teachers have their technology there and be prepared in their own classrooms. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Well, why don't we move on to the K K five conversation and I assume that in general, we agree with the Wednesday virtual and then we'll think about the continued of the the spectrum of the distancing of the social distancing at the different level in our minds. So let's go on to the next, the first group, which is the K five. And do we want to look at this from the five-three lens and then the two lens since they're, or do we want to kind of chunk it together?
I think, Tim, probably, I mean, the programs and the proposals are essentially the same. So I think that we can look at it together. I did just quickly pull the survey data regarding, and again, the question that we asked is the social distancing were adjusted to three to five feet in the face-to-face setting, I would still feel safe in school as long as masks are still worn. And it's just a little bit better than a 50-50 split. 68 elementary staffers who took the survey say they agree or strongly agree to that. And 62 said they disagree or strongly disagree. So, you know, not quite a 50-50, but pretty darn close to that. I will say that in earlier conversations regarding the social distancing, we did, the board asked about other districts in our area and what they're doing as far as space goes. And they're using phrases like as much space as possible. No one that I spoke to from our Gresham, Isabella, R E S D districts or from our Middle Cities districts is holding to a strict six feet of social distancing. So they're in the range of four to five, three to five, or using phrases like as much space as possible. So the other thing I would just remind you is that the idea of the six feet was a recommendation from the governor's return to school report that was out. Not a requirement, a recommendation.
And I think that if you ask, I think two teachers want the blend gone, this is not a pace they can keep up. So if we want to end the blend, I had a, I had a brand-new family come today that wanted to register a second grader face-to-face. I couldn't take her face-to-face. I mean, we have to put everybody that comes online at this point.
So that was my next question for for you guys, Diane and Marcy, if you could answer it. And thank you Jennifer, by the way, for pulling up the staff survey. It's really nice to have, is if we don't reduce to three to five feet, what happens? Does, we keep it as is, is there a removing of the blend or is there another option that has been discussed?
At this point, this is Marcy, at this point, if we don't reduce to three to five as a range, we would not be able to bring back any other students that have said they wanted to come back. So for example, I have 14 students that want to come back between K first and second, just in my building. I can't accept any of them unless we change the three to, the six foot down to three to five. I currently can fit approximately 17 in a classroom with the six feet rule, which is what the majority of my classrooms are right now. So if we want to bring back these 14 spread across the rooms, it might only be a couple per room right now, but it would still be more like four feet or five feet, not six feet. And I believe from talking to my colleagues in three to five, they can't bring back as many face-to-face or any face-to-face if they don't, we don't change this number. So that, that is, that would be a real detriment to our plan if we couldn't have some flexibility with that.
Concur.
And can I say one more thing? I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go right ahead.
I was just gonna say, I wanted, I just wanted to also reiterate, I really believe we have done such a good job with the sanitizing and the hand washing and all of the sanitizer stations around our building and the mask-wearing that I feel like if we were going to prioritize things, I feel like mask-wearing and sanitizing would be our top priority. And then next would come having some flexibility with that spacing. Not that we would just be willy-nilly, but the fact that we would have some leniency with that and allow more kids to be able to come back so that those parents are not having a hardship. We have quite a few that want to get back to work and they will not be able to do that if their child cannot come back face-to-face. So I just wanted to reiterate how hard we're working on the sanitizing and the mask-wearing. And for five to eight-year-olds, that, it was a little bit of a challenge, but it's, it's working pretty well. And so I feel very comfortable if you were to allow us to have three to five feet.
And I truly believe that if you ask teachers if they could end the blend and have some flexibility on that spacing and you surveyed them today, it would be, it would be more than 50% because they realize that in order to do that, we need and parents, we told parents that one try, one trimester and then they would have an opportunity to come back and we wouldn't be allowing that either, so.
I'm wondering if just because we've received some correspondence with the board regarding certain grade levels not wanting to end the blend, is this a possibility that we could go grade by grade, school by school within the elementary and, and ask what each grade wanted to? Now, don't get me wrong, I know we've heard many advocates for doing, ending the blend and not having blended classrooms, but we've heard some that they, they want to keep what they're doing. They want to keep the students that they have. Could we take this down and kind of let each grade level decide what they want to do? Or does this have to be a universal vote for everyone?
I feel like, I feel like I should have trademarked the phrase, "end the blend."
You should have, I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so we actually spoke about that earlier today because I did, and I shared with the board, I did spend some time on Friday morning with a very energetic, passionate, devoted group of teachers that told me a million reasons why they want to maintain their blended classrooms. And so if you notice in our proposal, we did use a phrase to end the blend as much as possible. I don't know that we can go teacher to teacher and say, what do you want, what do you want, what do you want? But I think to get our grade levels together in the building and to say, okay, where can we make this work, where can we develop general consensus? I think we are able to do that. And there's some good rationale for blended classes and there's some great rationale to not have blended classes. So, I mean, I think we can see both sides. So I, I want to be able to offer teachers the opportunity to say, this is what really works for us. But the majority of the teacher voices that we have heard do not want the blended classroom. The majority of the teacher voices that we've heard do not want to be a full virtual teacher with very large class sizes. So we know that those are two of our biggest goals as we move forward with this. So, I mean, I think we need some time after some sort of decision is made to finesse those class lists and make sure that we can get students where they need to be. But I don't know that we can do exactly a perfect program for every person, which is the same with our families, right? I mean, I think we're trying to offer options to families knowing that there are going to be families in our communities that say, either option works for us, right? And so we're still trying to make the best of this crazy awful situation that was thrown at us. And I think we're doing a great job of trying to meet the needs of our students and families, but it's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be perfect for them and it's not going to be perfect for our teachers. We're just trying to maintain as much as we can.
I was wondering, and I know I keep bringing it back, I'm sorry, but if
but if we could talk about ventilation and air filtration? Because with an airborne virus, it really is such a key piece of the equation. And I know personally, I would feel differently about relaxing the three, the six feet if I knew some data on how our air ventilation and filtration is working. It, I mean, we know it's really efficient at lowering risks of outbreaks. And so is there, I, I mean, I know it's, it's late in the game. Do we have any information on ways we could get this?
Yeah, I mean, Josh would be happy to join us for a board meeting to explain the, the filters and the systems that we have. That was a part of our return-to-school plan this summer that we looked at, him providing a higher quality of filter, and I'm sorry, I don't know all the technical terms, but really working with our classes to make sure that we do have a higher quality of air filter. He did listen to your concerns after the last board meeting. And I can certainly invite him to present at our next board meeting, but he felt as though we were doing the best that we could to meet those requirements. Of course, we're still encouraging open windows, open doors, those kinds of things right now, while it's not thirty degrees outside and while we still have, you know, a little bit of flexibility in Michigan. So, again, I can't tell you the technical terms for everything, but I know a large portion of the maintenance budget was used to purchase higher-quality air filters that were installed in all of our classrooms this year.
So I guess what I, and I'm happy to talk to him too, is if we can get some numbers, like what's our basically filtering rate per room? As, you know, the best we can is awesome, right? That's all we can do with the infrastructure we have in place, but what is that best? So that we can have that piece of information and the filtration rate. But my understanding, and again, I am no expert in air filtration either, is that we should be able to get these measurements based on, on what I'm reading, so that we add that one piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, I'm sure that Josh has those rates.
And the filters are in the HEPA. So they've been providing HEPA filters, and he was changing them out on a weekly-ish basis, I think, what the plan was. And so they bought a whole bunch of HEPA filters. But each of the different schools had different units. And so that was kind of the variation that I think that we weren't quite sure about.
Jen, to go back, are the surrounding schools, I mean, we might as well take data from where we can get it, right? Surrounding schools, are, are they doing the six foot? Or are, have they relaxed it in all, or at least the lower Ls?
Yeah, so, so in our nine districts in Gresham Isabella, no one was able to start the year with, with six feet. So they all have started the year with three to five feet. Or when I asked, the phrase I kept hearing was "as much, as much space as possible."
And have there been any, have there been any outbreaks in the lower Ls?
Well, they've had cases just like we have, but there have not been outbreaks.
Okay.
I had a student in my taekwondo class have it transmitted to her in her second-grade class in one of our schools. So, so there must have been some transmission inside the buildings a little bit. Which is the thing that I was wondering is, everything I keep hearing, and I haven't seen the data to back it up, but what I keep hearing from different spots is that we are by far doing the best in, in this area when it comes to cases and transmissions and stuff like that.
And, and I would add to this, Brendan, and although it's great to get data from around us, none of those other districts are quite like us. I mean, we're central right there. I think we do have a potential higher risk. And the fact that we're doing so good, I think, again, is, you know, shows really all the effort that everyone is putting in. And that is one of the reasons I would be so hesitant to remove that, is that especially as we're entering these winter months, it seems that we, we'd be increasing our risk by quite a bit.
So in general, from the recommendation, if we are not able to relax the six foot, in general, we would not be allowed to end the hybrid structure? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's for K through five.
Not the hybrid, but the blended.
The blended, I'm sorry, yes.
Three to five feet would give us the flexibility that we need. And like we pointed out, there are really only a few per classroom when you split them across the whole building. But with us being right at max right now at six feet, even saying, oh, we're going to give you two more students, wouldn't be six feet. But would it be five feet? Yes. Would some rooms maybe be four feet, depending on the size? Our classrooms are all different sizes and different setups and whatnot. So I, I think the flexibility is, is a must for us at this point in order to continue with our plan.
So, Marcy, would you feel that five foot would be in general enough to be able to absorb most of the students that want to come back? I mean, granted that some classrooms are not going to be, are going to be too small to do that, where other ones will, and I don't know exactly, you know, if it's all the Ks or all the ones or all the twos or...
Right. Um, I, I think that's why we really wanted a range. And Derby kind of mentioned also just the flexibility of it, because our classrooms are all different. And if we say five, then, okay, I'll be able to give these two classrooms two kids, but these two classrooms can't take any. You know, then we start that whole thing of not being able to take everybody back.
And I'm going to be honest that if you say five, I can't take all mine back. I think vowels is the same, in the same situation. So I, I need a flexibility of three to five in order to allow parents that want to come back, come back, and then end the blended teaching model that we have.
I think that my biggest concern i- if we removed six foot would be, you know, we are doing the best out of our surrounding friends. And I think that that's for obvious reasons. And I, I worry that, you know, teachers don't have as much time as necessary and having to deal with the blend and all of these things. But when we have several classes, having to be quarantined for two weeks, I mean, it's, we're still going to not have teachers who have time. We're going to have teachers who are out, no subs, people who are very sick. You know, I just, I feel like it's a slippery slope. So that's, that's kind of where I'm, where I'm at with it.
So, um, my last thought. I'm very, very uncomfortable with it, but I also don't like the idea that it completely kills the, the new plan and the new direct, direction. And I like to try to be practical, and I think compromise is important to our whole federalist system. And so I'm fairly certain that if John was here today, he'd be the fourth vote to, but, okay, having flexible social distancing ranges. And I think waiting two or three weeks to retake this vote and then have it go that way doesn't do any good for anybody. So only because it's absolutely necessary for the K through five to work, I, I do think I would support a flexible range there. However, I would like, I would like, want to know every single time we have to make one of these flexes, right? This room, we had to go down to five feet. This room, we had to go down to four feet, just some kind of documentation, just so we can, board members have a better understanding of where each building is at.
Brendan, maybe what we could do would be to follow up with specific class size for each, each classroom in the buildings, like do a list of, you know, kindergarten is, because our buildings are all so different, so then you could see like where the space is and where the sizes are. Would that help? You're muted.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I'm, you know, putting my trust in, in our administration, which I think has proved that it deserves it, our, our whole, our whole employee crew in general, that, um, you know, as little space or as little social distancing, lessing it, lowering it as little as possible. Um, I know, I, I just wanted to make sure that us, everybody's prime directive in this idea is that, yeah, we might have to lower it a little bit, but let's stay transparent, stay accountable, and do it as little as possible.
I like Brendan's thought. My one concern is I think three feet is too little. I think that's going to condense. You know, I'm, five, I'm definitely comfortable. Four, I'm getting very uncomfortable. Three, I'm beyond comfortable. And, and completely understanding, there's a big difference to me from a five-foot-seven middle-schooler and a three-foot second-grader in the size of their desks. And so they're much smaller humans. And so putting the, the generalized constraint on everyone, no matter their body size, is kind of where I am leaning, where, you know, the distance involved, especially in the lower grades can be less than the upper grades. But three feet to me seems, that's two at a table, and that seems a little too close to me. But, um, but I do like Brendan's thought. I think some flexibility in this, depending on, I think, would be of great value for the district overall because of the, of the issues with the blend, especially with the lower grades of the lower L in the issues that they're having. We need to support that, we need to resolve that. And so that's something that I'm, I'm willing to look into also.
I'm also wondering, for the teachers that felt very uncomfortable with this plan over this reducing of the social distancing, if they have some choice on whether in this new model, they would be teaching online or staying face-to-face? I don't know how much flexibility is on assignments at this point.
Well, especially when we look at blended classes and trying to not have blended classes, that we are right now looking for volunteers for virtual teachers. We are not finding them, but we are looking and we are asking, and we are looking and we are asking. So I, I think those options exist. I think that for our teachers that are fully virtual already, they, they want to continue being fully virtual, but I, I don't know that we have a new crop of teachers that will, but maybe with different information, maybe that would change, change their mind. But we are always working that staffing puzzle because we know with ending the blend, we do have to have a couple of additional teachers that would agree to teach only virtual.
One other component that I'd like to talk to, but then I'd like to open it up to the public, if that's okay, looking at the time, to get some feedback from them before we continue our board conversation, is the conversation regarding, you know, some virtual down, virtual time for the K five teachers with not providing them any kind of non-face-to-face or direct teaching time breaks. So, especially after hearing with the, the blended and the difficulties that they're having, and I'm making the assumption that we just haven't heard of the other educators who are struggling with some of this new environment. So is there any information regarding, what are we are doing to support, to give them some, the teachers some ability to do their prepping and planning and programming, and that's not during the day? So again, we make the assumption that in general, for most of the day, they're going to have students in the classroom in one way or another with lunch and everything. Talking about the day off or one day a week off, like Wileene, Wileene was talking about with the French model, with everyone at the district getting a virtual Wednesday idea. Can there be a little bit of conversation regarding that?
Tim, can I say something? This is Marcy.
Yes.
Um, so I guess one of my, one thing I wanted to share was, we have put in countless hours as administrators with our teachers to come up with, how can we make this work? What's the process? Let's try this, that didn't work, let's try this. We put things in place using lots of other staff members. We have rearranged schedules to really make it work best so that the teachers have enough time to not only go live with their virtuales or do small groups with their virtuales, but also to do the planning piece of that. We're using Title I teachers, we're using our media assistants, we're using our paraprofessionals. We're rearranging our recesses and our, you know, different times of the day that allow them for more planning time. We're also using some staff meeting time and professional learning communities that our elementary teachers are required to do once a week. We are allowing them to use at least two of those a month, that hour, which is a collaboration time for them built into the day, because we've been able to schedule that way. So we are really providing as much support at the K five as we can throughout the school day. But you're right, they do spend time outside of the classroom, planning and organizing and everything. It's kind of the nature of teaching, and so a lot of them are perfectionists and, and very much wanting to do the best they can for their students. And so they do spend that extra time. But I think as administrators, I think we can all tell you that we are working really hard with each group, whether it's a department or a grade level, to give them the time they need and, and to be as flexible as possible within our, our, you know, our daily parameters, if you will, of what the school day looks like.
And I think maybe public comment will shed some on the Wednesdays off where the littles. I really hope that that's not going to be an option because I've heard from many of my parents that daycare is going to really burden them and their work schedules.
Would it be helpful in any way if, if we did think about it more as maybe one Wednesday a month that was already pre-planned and something that we could put on the calendar instead of having it be a, a weekly thing? I do understand what you're saying for the families, that would be a real struggle. And you're, and I too work with very young children, and I agree that coming back from breaks and not sticking with that routine can be a tough one. And so I just didn't know if that would be something that we might consider as we're talking about that instead of.
Are you, Amy, when you, when you bring the once a month, are you saying, and keep the blended classrooms?
No, not necessarily. You guys were, were talking about wanting to have, that you felt within the classrooms, not having the blended class, or would, would potentially make sense. I guess, um, I guess I'm wondering, a lot of people have talked about just stress in general for teachers teaching in a, in a COVID environment. Would it be at all helpful to your families and to your teachers to have a, a pre-planned one-day-a-month kind of general workday?
Yeah, I think that if we could plan it out so it was once a month and gave parents some time, I think we could do that.
Okay, so that, but would that be helpful for your teachers for mental health and all of those things as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree too. Jennifer talked to us about that earlier today when we were meeting, that when we, as K five, weren't as gung-ho about a weekly day, Jen suggested, you know, what about one, one day a month? And we were looking at a calendar already, trying to determine how we could do that, what would best fit. I know she's very open to helping us figure that out. And we all kind of said, okay, that's like our next step then. Let's, let's get this tonight figured out as far as discussing the blend, discussing the three-to-five feet and all of those important pieces. And then we said for sure, our next thing to discuss is, how do we give teachers some relief? How do we give them some self-care time?
My concern would be, is one day a month enough? If the amount of the burnout that we, at least we're getting as feedback is what's happening, I would worry that, you know, it's a good start, don't get me wrong, but is that enough for them? And now that I'm in favor of changing models left and right, but then, you know, is the next consideration, if that's not enough? And if we think it's too disruptive to the school system on little kids to have Wednesday virtual, because it's, wouldn't be off, I'd be virtual, do we, do we go to an early release? Or how can we provide that support so they don't burn out? burn out? And again, I think some of that conversation might depend on what we do with the blended. I can imagine that is some of the burnout be addressed by removing some of the blended situation we have.
I really think if we end the blend and think about a week a month, keep in place the support that we are already giving them. I think that in talking to my teachers, living, breathing school, day in and day out with with my teachers, and no one sees like we do as administrators, how hard they're working. But I think that, and I can't say 100%, but I'm 99% sure that if we provide teachers with what we're talking about, ending the blend for them, keeping the supports in place, giving them one month, giving them PLC time, I think that we can do this and we can do it well and it will be best for families and for kids as well.
So Jen, why don't we take this time now and open it up to the public and get some public feedback?
Okay, great. So we do already have a few hands that are raised. I'll be going to first. If you are someone in our audience this evening that would like to make comment, please go ahead and raise your hand and I will just keep going down the list. So first, we have Mary. Mary, are you there? Okay, I'm in, Mary, can you hear me? Okay, I'll go on to our next person and come back. Green, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a kindergartner and a seventh grader. And the kindergartner has a dedicated teacher and it's going really, really well. We were really concerned about it, but it's going really, really well. So please don't change that. However, for the seventh grader, it's not going so well. And the reason is because we can see that the requirements are there and he's doing the work, but he's not learning much. He has a couple of classes where he receives, he goes to class, he has regular class and he has assignments and they're meaningful and it works. But the rest of them, the assignments are mostly meaningless. He sees the teachers sometimes. I, I can say that in most of the classes, he's not learning much that will stay with him. So the learning at the middle school for him is not working whatsoever. And it's not because he does not put in the effort. He puts in the effort, sometimes he works until eight or nine at night. But he's not really learning. The assignments are fairly meaningless. And he's not truly getting instruction from the professor. So the requirements are there, but the learning is not. And I'm curious if it's ineffective at the whole grade level practically and the discussion with the other parents are fairly similar. I'm wondering how would help the teacher to have Wednesday also online learning, because that would mean practically more online learning. So I'm not sure how that would translate actually for, for a better learning environment, either for the teachers or for the students. And I'm curious if there are any other plans to change something currently at what's going on with the learning at middle school.
And again, we have Mary. Mary, are you there? Go on, Kelly, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I have a couple of things. One, I have two high school students and I would say that the hybrid has gone exceptionally well. I do have very motivated students who academically try their best, so that may be part of it. But I would really implore all of you board members to consider very strongly not limiting the six feet down to three to five. I understand the problems. But I was done the survey recently, as were my children both, that if that's, that distance was decreased at the high school, what would I choose? And I've heard no discussion about any parents wanting to go online, but I immediately said if you make my high school kids down to three feet, they're going online, they're not going to stay at the school. And I haven't heard anybody say that. And, you know, we have over 800 cases in the county. We're in a state of emergency. It's only supposed to get worse. I want you to, and there's our studies that say six feet's not even adequate. So I'm very concerned about you guys lowering that, even at the elementary levels. And I did want to point out earlier, it was talked about whether there was an outbreak anywhere. And I do know that Loose Road Elementary in Alma had over 20 some cases. So I would say that that is somewhat of an outbreak at that elementary. I didn't know if everybody on the board was aware of that number. So those are just my comments. But I will say for the high school, I think the hybrid is great. That's all I have to say. And I thank everybody for all the hard work. I know this has been very, very tough for all of you, for the teachers, and I think everybody's doing a great job.
Thank you, Kelly. Next we have Katie. Katie, are you there? You're muted. Hey, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you and we can see you, just so you know, I had to promote you to panelist, so go ahead.
Well, thank you for listening this evening and thank you, board members, for attending. You would think as an online teacher, I would know to unmute myself. I thought I could give a perspective a little bit regarding kind of the view from the online teacher standpoint. I appreciate the concern that our board members have and our community as a whole has for the overall health and safety of our students. I don't think there's a single person out there that says we would want to jeopardize children's health or that we don't consider safety to be one of our primary concerns. I do think that there is another piece of it though, that might not be the obvious physical health that we're concerned with. And it would be the mental health and even the academic health of our kids. I have seen over the last, gosh, what week are we? Week eight? I've seen over the last eight weeks, some students who have thrived in the online setting. They have gained independence, they have taken ownership of their learning, they have parents who are incredibly supportive, incredibly encouraging other children, they reach out with questions, they seek answers. The other end of that spectrum, however, are those students who are struggling tremendously with online learning. They are the kids that are not attending any of the live lessons. They are the students that are not completing any assignments. They are the students that maybe don't have the support system that they would need. Because even as the online teacher, I recognize that my role this year is vastly different than any role I have ever taken on. I am someone who imparts information. I try to build an encouragement for the topic, but to a certain extent, I then pass that off to students who have to become self-managers of their learning, which when we're talking high school, college age, it's something they can do. When we're talking third graders, it's very difficult. I worry as an educator about the things that I'm not able to do this year for my students that I would normally do in a given year. Something as simple as offering reading groups to students who need that extra support. And it's not for a lack of wanting and it's not for a lack of trying. It is simply a logistics concern. There's not enough time in the day to support the 38 students that I currently have with basic tier one instruction, so their, their everyday instruction, on top of providing those interventions that we know that they need. I also worry about the mental health of these students. There are some who feel incredibly disconnected. And again, it is not a concern, or it's not for a lack of wanting to connect with our students. There is a natural disconnect that comes through teaching on the computer. And so I worry that when we're making these decisions moving forward, yes, we have to consider physical health. It's utmost priority. But I also worry that if we deny families the right to come back to the classroom, there are families that I know that are concerned about their children's academic and mental health. And I worry as an educator about the fact that I can recognize these concerns. I can't maybe address it or correct those concerns right now. And I worry about how much time does that child have to lose in order for this to go away and allow those students to come back into a classroom with a six-foot distancing? I know these decisions are not easy. I just thought I could offer a perspective of looking at the overall health of all of our children. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Next we have Dana. Are you there, Dana?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, I did have a question as it pertains to the balanced calendar students because I do have two balanced calendar students. If we're talking about adding a couple of students to each classroom, I wondered if that would affect balanced calendar classrooms, given that those students did start about three weeks prior to all the other students. And it was my understanding that each child is supposed to have a minimum number of hours per school year and how would they ever obtain those hours being three weeks behind a whole classroom? But secondly, there was a point made about transparency and like the number of students that would be in each individual classroom. And from a parent's perspective, I would greatly appreciate having that transparency before we made our decision for the second trimester, because maybe it's not my students that have to be in the three foot, maybe they're in the five foot. And that's a vastly different decision to make of if I want to keep them face to face and with five feet spacing versus three foot spacing? And do I need to look at online or do I need to look at another district? So I would appreciate access to that info. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Dana. Next we have Pam. Pam, are you there? Pam, are you there? Hi Pam, can you hear me? Pam, can you hear me? Pam, are you there? Pam Worth, are you there? Okay. Jessica, are you there? Jessica, can you hear me?
I just unmuted myself. Was that successful?
That is successful. We can hear you. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you Superintendent Verliger for using this meeting to update the community about some positive COVID cases in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I really feel like this kind of transparency is critically important when we're dealing with an ongoing public health crisis. I'm also really glad to hear that the mitigation efforts, which I know have been a challenge for everyone, are proving effective. And I would like to add that I don't think that now is the time to relax those efforts. My concerns about the schools are similar to my concerns about our society as a whole, which is to say that I'm worried that people are deciding that since what we've been doing has been working well, we can relax. And I'm not sure that this attitude makes sense, given what public health experts are predicting for this winter. And I say all this with an appreciation for what teachers are dealing with right now, as well as the struggles that students and families are facing. I know that none of this is easy. So thanks to everybody for doing what they can. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. And we have Bree, are you there, Bree?
Yes, hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a mother to five children ages 10 to 17 and my children are doing very well. They are maintaining As. However, my seventh grader on his, when he gets home around noon, he does less than five minutes of work, still maintains As. And then my ninth grader on his days off, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the same thing. He's, I mean, I'm sorry, he's not a ninth grader, he's a 10th grader. He's doing five to 10 minutes of work and getting an A. So I'm just worried about the quality of his learning. And all my children are in sports, doing football or soccer, so they're getting less than the three to five foot of distancing. So I just see that this isn't really happening in the sports aspect or on recess. And they're really lacking in the quality of their learning. Even though their grades are reflecting that they're doing very well, I don't think they're getting the quality. But I do believe that the teachers and administration are doing a great job. It's no fault of their own, but they're really lacking on the days that they're not there. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Bree. Next we have Margot. Margot, are you there?
Hi, everyone. Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. Oh gosh, I have a lot to say. I'm going to try to keep it very short and concise. That's going to be hard for me, as a lot of you know me, I am wordy. I am in absolute support of doing an all online on Wednesday for all. Only provide for all of them, period. There are other schools that have done it around us. There are other districts that have done it and have done it successfully. I know that another point I have is just because something is working, somebody else just said, it doesn't mean that we should try to meddle with it. The three to five feet distance is not something that we should try to meddle with, that I do not think, although they are just suggestions. Science speaks to those suggestions for a reason. Speaking as a former, not too long ago, Mount Pleasant Public School teacher, I know how much time means. And giving the teachers time to actually be able, sorry, I'm getting emotional, is crucial because part of the reason why some of those online students are lacking, especially in middle school, is because those teachers don't have time. And the K two, teachers don't have time either. The K five teachers don't have time either and giving them that time is absolutely crucial. Sorry, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Kelly, did you have something else you wanted to speak on?
I'm Taylor, her daughter. I just wanted to
You need to tell them that you're senior in high school.
I, sorry. I just wanted to say that I'm a senior at the Mount Pleasant High School and I'm a little concerned about the sanitary issues going on because in none of my classes are we wiping down or hand sanitizing. We are not social distancing. I know that they group us together purposefully for groups and they expect us to be surrounded around one desk. And I also just wanted to add that there's like no social distancing in the hallways. It's always clumps of people, which I think we're not supposed to be doing. And the last thing I wanted to say was that I'm in no honors classes, so, but I'm a really hardworking student. And when I go to in-class, when I go to in-class, I am just sitting there doing nothing because I am caught up on my work and my peers are behind. So I just have to listen to them being explained, all the stuff that they're supposed to do. And I'm, when we're online, and I just feel like I'm not getting like proper education because I just sit there for two days and play on my phone, basically. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Taylor. Heather, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
You do sit there and do nothing.
Heather, are you there? Heather, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name's Heather. I'm a third grade teacher in the district. I'm wondering what conversations, if any, have been had about the outsourcing of our Oilers online to an outside virtual program? So that our current teachers who teach blended and our current online Oilers online teachers can now become face-to-face teachers? I know that this method is being used in districts around us. And from what I hear, staff, students, and parents have been very pleased with it. And this would also solve the three to five foot social distancing issue. Currently in my building, we have 13 confirmed students who want to come back face-to-face in third grade. That means that there are three classrooms to split those 13 students. So that's an additional four to five students being put into my class, which is already the size of 17. And the social distancing of six feet is a stretch, to be honest. And there are also still a handful of families who have not committed one way or the other about coming back. So it could potentially be more than four to five students joining our classes for a second try. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Margot, did you have something else to add?
Yes, thank you for giving me the chance to come back and say what I had to say more of before I got more emotional. I apologize for that. I just wanted to say one last point. I do understand about the Wednesday being offer families being a burden. But we also have to, to think about the fact that that is still an instructional day. And the kids will get online instruction. And the teachers will also get the chance to, and the time to do that online and prepare for that online instruction. And give the needed feedback to those online students. And those online students would also get, those students would get a chance to be online and to learn online, just in case that they do go back to, or do go to being online. What, what expose is them, what exposure do they have now of being online? None at all. And those districts all around us that do have at least one day of those students being online have that exposure of online learning. And they are familiar with the Google Classroom structure and they're familiar with the lessons. And on top of it, those teachers have the experience of posting those instructional materials on Google Classroom. Sorry, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Margot. Andrea, are you there? Andrea, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep, go.
Hi. I am both a teacher in the district and I am a parent. Right now, I would like to speak only as a parent. As a teacher, I could argue both sides as far as the three to five feet and the six-foot rule. But I would like to talk about my experience with my son, who is in the hybrid program, and my family's experience. My son, my husband has been diagnosed with lymphoma for the past three years. We have been told it is not curable. However, it is treatable. At first, I did want to put my son online only. However, I know him as a learner and I knew that he would not be successful online. So he is in the classroom. I worry very much about my family's health and my son possibly bringing something home to my family if we lessen the distance from six feet. I understand that this might be necessary. And like I said, I could argue both sides. As a teacher, I want to see as many students back as we can get back. And I know that this is a safe environment for so many of our families and our students. And I'm really proud that we're able to provide that. But as a parent, I must say that we see that cases are rising, I believe, in 48 states. And it's very, very scary that they're saying that we are hitting a second wave right now and getting ready to hit a second wave. And that I, from what I've researched and what I have seen, I am a nerd like that, they're saying that the worst might be yet to come. So I just ask that all board members think about what you're doing and the place that some of our families are at, including my own. Where I'm sending my son, he's being safe, he's watching his surroundings. However, if he is sitting in a classroom where we are putting in more and more students, that is worrisome that he could bring something home. Where I have a husband who is Native American, is diabetic, and does have lymphoma. I'm sure that I am not the only person that has problems or high-risk people with high risks in their house. But I am a parent who had to decide what's best for my son, what's best for my husband. And it's very, very scary to me with what is coming up. And the decisions that we're being asked to make right now, it's very, very hard. And so if we do lessen the distance, which we might have to do, I ask that we are very, very careful with it, that we still ask families that can stay online to stay online. And try to do what's best for all of our families and be smart about it. And I appreciate everybody listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. At this point, I don't have any other audience members that have their hand raised. Maybe I do. RL, can you hear us?
Hi, it's Rhonda. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. First off, I just want to say I'm exceptionally grateful for the time and effort from absolutely everyone. I know that this is not easy. I do teach second grade. And I do want to say that I am extremely grateful for everyone that is in my building, our title teacher helping to give us more time as teachers to do lesson plans or videos. And also the support staff that come into my room when I'm doing live lessons and administrator. I know that everything that is being tried to be done for us, I'm very appreciative. Everything that is having to be done, it all falls on my shoulders. I am absolutely responsible for everything. And I just want to express how thankful I am. However, everyone wants all of us teachers to be superheroes. But it's just not possible because we, as teachers, are all human. And we have our families and we have life outside of school. With ending the blend, I am in favor of that because it is not humanly possible to do it correctly for our kiddos or ourselves. The three to five feet, I definitely disagree with that. I have a severely compromised family member. And I am disheartened that in order for us to end the blend, we would be required to lower the social distance. So I am sad that it's being proposed that in order for us to end the blend, we would, in effect, possibly put our health at risk. The masking up, speaking from many of my colleagues, when we're keeping track and asking students to mask up anywhere from 45 to 70 times on a given day is not really going well in our classrooms. I am worried about my colleagues, their mental health, and myself. We are, we have such incredible colleagues and I would truly hate to lose any one of them. What is being expected out of us during our teacher hours? It is simply not possible for us to do absolutely everything that is required. We already know as teachers, we take things home, we get it done. But everything that is being asked of us in order for us to do our jobs is just not possible. And I am really scared about the burnout because I know some of us are really sinking. I know that we're told to practice self-care. But there is absolutely no time for that. Every single one of us knew that this year was going to be beyond anything that was ever imaginable. But this is really, it's taken a lot of us back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Kirsten, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes to, to speak to you all. I just wanted to chime in. I have a couple of kids in the district right now. One of them is going face-to-face. And then I have two other that are part of the online Oilers program and they're both at Fancher. And I would really like the board to, to consider allowing the, the students that need to come back face-to-face to go back face-to-face. I know that there's a lot of discussions around physical safety in terms of the social distancing. But when I look at the struggles that my son is having because he's on online Oilers program and the deficit, or I guess deficit isn't the appropriate word, maybe the difference in the different supports that he's not getting, it breaks my heart every day. He's never been a particularly strong reader. And watching him wither away because he's on the online program and thinking about having him stay in that program for the rest of the year, it's really a disservice to him. And I don't think that it's the spirit of what the board wants or what any of the teachers want. And I should mention that I also recognize that stu, that teachers are being asked to do way too much. So it's not that his instructor isn't working, working their butt off to make sure that he's, he's having as many opportunities as he can. Certainly, his teacher is doing that, but he needs a face-to-face environment. And he needs certain types of support that I can't give him because I'm not a reading specialist. And although I sit down with him every single day and I work with him every single day, I can't do that because that's not my area of expertise. And so I am asking you, really just begging you, to please give my son the opportunity to grow as a student. And have the opportunity to reach his full potential. And if I need to admit in front of all of you that maybe I made a mistake by selecting an online Oilers program initially, then I will say, I made a mistake, but please don't punish him because of the mistake that I made as a parent trying to navigate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. At this point, I don't have any other audience participant with their virtual hand raised. If there is anyone that would still like to make a comment, please feel free to go ahead and raise your hand and I will unmute your microphone. Chelsea, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I just want to say, so my daughter is fourth grade at McLeir. I am PTO president. I'm more of your substitute teachers too. My daughter, we picked online because I've seen these board meetings. We were told that if you can keep your kid online, do online. My husband works out of the home. He could not be home, but I could. So we said, okay. We know that she's going to struggle a little bit. But that's going to be okay because she's always been one of the tops of her class. However, she's been struggling mentally severely. We've had, she's, she's depressed. I mean, she's in therapy and we know, we have a family history of mental health issues. We have certain members of the family have had addiction issues and we can see it spiraling. And if we had known that we would not possibly get the chance to go back face-to-face, we never would have done this. Because we, we even asked the principal, we said, okay, so if we commit for the 12 weeks, we can come back after that. And she said, yes. I, we had a specific teacher we requested. We were told most likely that she would get that teacher. All of her friends are face-to-face. All of the kids in the neighborhood are either face-to-face or not of her age. She's an only child. She is getting pretty much zero socialization. Online school, I think her teacher's great, but they're muted. The kids are muted. They don't talk to each other. They may break out in little groups. But they don't get that socialization. And she is really, really suffering mentally. And we really need to get her back face-to-face. And we've been, my husband works outside the home. My husband is a teacher at a correctional facility. So he's been teaching through this whole thing. We've been mask-wearing since before everybody else was mask-wearing. We've been doing it. You know, and we were a little bit scared of face-to-face. But we just, we need to go back. And, and I know that we're not the only ones who've struggled. I know that when we talked to the principal, she said, we are not the only ones who've said that some of these kids are having some depression and mental health issues and need to get back to their classroom. So we just would like something to happen to where at least some of these kids can come back. I'm hoping that it's going to be able to be fixed somehow. I mean, I don't know. I know adding new teachers is out of the question probably, but we just got to figure something out for these kids.
Thank you, Chelsea. And again, there isn't any attendee that has their hand raised. Give it a couple more minutes. If anyone would like to raise their hand. There isn't anyone else? Tim?
Okay, so why don't we finish up the board conversation? And is there any other insights or anything, any board member would like to share regarding the modification of the K5 structure, modification of the middle school structure? We seem to be relatively comfortable with the keeping the high school the way it is and modifying the CTE program. It's just, Jen, just to clarify, there doesn't seem to be any modifications to the balanced calendar, as in there's no students adding to that at this point because they started at the beginning of the year. So there's no modifications to the balanced calendar structures.
It's correct.
To the adult ed and Oasis Way program. So really, we have to focus on the verifying the Wednesday virtual for the tech center, the Wednesday virtual for the middle school. And then the clarification of trying to end the blend classes in the K5 structures. But to know that if we're doing some of those, there will have to be some kind of variation to the six-foot distancing to be able to achieve that. Brandon had some very good recommendations with transparency about how to do that and know that the priority would be six foot, but then we would have to have some variation to that. So that's kind of my summation of the recommendations and where the structures are. We've heard some internal conversation. We've heard the public speaking. And so is there any board members who would like to highlight any of that? Oh, and one last thing would be the the K5, one day off a month structure, that some mental health, some, some prep time added into their calendar in some way. I think I got everything covered. Please correct me if I'm, I don't, but um, is there anything that any board members would like to continue in this conversation?
Well, I think we probably all agree that we would want to honor the request of family members. And we've heard this in the public comments. I think we were made that, at least I wasn't on the board at that point, but it was a clear feeling from the board at the time that we would give families choices to come back. I wonder if there's any, and I'm sure those things have been discussed, but is it, can we find a way to remove the blended environment, which wasn't board-approved as far as I know? And yet maintain some social distancing. And what I heard tonight was that we couldn't. Is there any way that maybe that's the one area in a specifically key through two where we do hire a couple teachers? I just wanted to know if that had been approached, if we, more specific in our teacher hires.
That was a thought I was just having too, is that I'm about ready to call-
That was a thought I was just having too, is that I'm about ready to call, let's hire some teachers because it's the safest way to get everybody what they want.
I mean, if, if that's what the board wants us to do, we can attempt to hire teachers. You have to remember that this time of year, there aren't always teacher candidates that are available. I think we also have to remember the state that our budget is in. And, and then also classroom space. I mean, do we have physically have additional classrooms in our building to add sections? So, so what I, I think when we look at the blended classroom and we look at that environment, we're not saying there isn't going to be any social distancing. We're just saying it could potentially be less than six feet. So I think we lean the way you described that as no social distancing. I, I get that six feet is the standard that folks are using, but we're still encouraging that distance as much as possible. But, um, certainly that is an option. I just don't know, timing wise, expense wise, candidate wise, um, is, is that a viable option?
And, and yeah, I do, I hear what you said. It's not no social distancing, the three to feet, to three or five. But I would agree with Tim. While five seems okay, the three, I mean, we are getting so slippery so quickly and having that open. Considering it's is really one of our main ways we're fighting this pandemic. It's to no one's benefit if we close down. Right? We're going, like, we lose all the benefits of opening a school. And while I fully agree blended is not working as students, uh, and now some students need to come back. Like I absolutely, you know, I, I fully agree with this. I'm trying to think if we can find some creative solutions that are short fixes to avoid reducing that six feet, stay safe, but allow, you know, what, what honor these, these requests.
Sure. I would just caution that hiring teachers is not a short fix. Because if we do hire teachers, um, they are ours. So then when we reach a point that we no longer need them, then we are on the hook for unemployment and those kinds of things. So there, there is some trailing liability, um, financially speaking that goes along with it. So, um, at one point when I did the calculation in order to end the blend, we would need to hire six to eight teachers. I don't know that that number is as high right now. But I haven't looked at those numbers recently, so I would have to go back and redo that calculation to figure out how many we would have to hire.
I'm curious if, um, since we know that there are students who want to come in, especially in our lower grades. I, I am curious. I know we had one comment from the community that some families would end up moving to online even though they're face to face now if we do decrease the social distancing requirement. So I'm, I'm curious if, I know Diane had mentioned that five feet wouldn't be doable still for them as far as their numbers, but have we, do we have information or numbers on? I know, I know it's probably not going to be super specific yet, but is there any idea that maybe those, some families will move to online and not stay face to face so that it might balance out a little bit?
So when we surveyed our community, uh, at the end of September and we asked them that question, if social distancing was adjusted to three to five feet, as long as masks were still worn, would you feel comfortable staying in face to face, want to move on, online unsure what you would do? Seventy-three percent of our families that responded said they would feel comfortable staying in face to face. So that does mean that, you know, twenty-seven percent would either be unsure, would want to do something else. But those were our numbers from our survey that we did at the end of September.
And I assume that question of twenty-some percent is not enough then to consider. I think if, if, if you can say that five feet isn't going to be enough, then, I mean, I, I don't, I don't.
I think, I think the only other option, sorry to butt in, but, um, the only other option would be to move some more furniture, which I'm sure we could probably move some more furniture. You know, um, we have tables and things like that, that they're pulling like smaller groups. But, I mean, maybe we could look at that. If five is the, it would still allow us to bring some kids back. I don't know about all.
And I assume you considered this. Um, I know Darby had mentioned that she can move, you know, to some larger areas in the, in the middle school. Is that, have you already exhausted that option? Or is that something you can also do?
We couldn't do that at the elementary school. I don't have any available spaces that we would be able to move to. We're using all of them. And as far as moving furniture, I mean, we're already pulling kids to do small groups on the floor. So, you know, to, to tell the teacher, you have one kidney table and I'm taking that out now because I have to get exactly five feet instead of four. I just think that's inconsiderate. I, I just don't think that's something that's going to work. I think we need the flexibility. And, and how do we choose out of those fourteen families that want to come back to Gannyard? How do I say, well, I can only take six of you? So do I do some lottery or raffle? And then, you know, I, I just think we promised them that after the try, they could make a decision. And I think we need to be flexible in allowing them to do that at this point.
I think I, uh, one of my highest classrooms would be twenty-one students, twenty-one to twenty-two.
Does lowering the distance to five feet make it so, uh, just hiring one or two teachers could end the blend?
I don't know where we would put the teachers, Brandon. We don't have any empty classrooms or anything. So I, I can't like, even if Jen said, hey, I'll give you another second grade teacher. It's not that that wouldn't be amazing to have small classes, but I don't have anywhere to put somebody. So I'm not sure how we would do that. And I have classrooms that are also different sizes that I could say twenty would fit, but in some rooms it might only be nineteen, you know, or some it might be twenty-one. It's, it's kind of hard to put an exact number on it.
I'm going to say it because I've been thinking about it, but you know, I mean, that's what the high school did, right? They went to a hybrid model and that's the reason, because they couldn't fit everyone with social distancing. And although I get it, like, I go into a brand new model, you know, on a trimester, second trimester is far from ideal. But then that's the Monday, Wednesday cohort, Thursday, Friday cohort. I just think that, you know, safety is so important and the mental wellness, like I, is there anything we can think of that would allow us to honor and stay safe?
Yeah, and, and actually that's something that we, we've considered and looked at. I just, I, I really worry about our ability, um, for our families to be able to support that, be, knowing that they need to work. Um, and, you know, they need to have their children in school with us. So I think our overall thought process is that we need our youngest children with us the most. And so that's why the five days a week, having our K five students with us. But, um, that is another option that, that has crossed my mind too.
I know that's not what teachers want. When we talked about it, the hybrid was not a good model for our littles. It really isn't.
It's not what parents want either at the elementary. That's just too difficult for five to seven year olds, even eight and nine year olds. We need them five days a week.
So I think where we need to structure this is based on the recommendations that have been provided to us. Is to do some kind of motions. Well, and just to clarify, Jen, presenting the information to us satisfies the thirty day requirement? Is that correct?
Yes, it does. Yes.
So at this time, we are legal with the, with the requirement of the law regarding the therapy thirty days, we have to have the update.
So right, so we've met the legal requirement, but we really need your guidance because we really need to be able to plan. So, um, I mean, we have, you know, right around a month before second trimester starts. And so to be fair and to be transparent to families and to help staff prepare. And if we have to do student transitions and that sort of thing, our hope was that we would have some approved direction from the board this evening so that we can spend the next four weeks putting that plan in place. So we can hit the ground running on November sixteenth.
Jen, on that note, I would like to move forward that we accept the recommendation of the staff. You know, they've obviously seen the problems. This isn't something that they've just come up with willy nilly. I think they've really considered the parents, the staff. And they know you're never going to hit everything perfectly, but I think they're trying the best that they can. And I respectfully would like to, um, motion that we move forward with what they've recommended.
So there is currently a motion to move forward with the recommendations as presented this afternoon. By Sheila. Is there a second to that motion? For the sake of moving forward, I will provide the second to that motion. So there is a motion and a second. Are there any further questions?
So this is for the entire, the whole set, right? K, K through five, middle school, high school.
That is.
All the recommendations that the, that the staff and administration made, yes.
It, it sounds.
It'd be keeping high school the same. It would giving Wednesday virtual for the tech center. It would be keeping the adult ed Oasis Way ba- balanced the same. It would be giving the Wednesday virtual option for the sixth through eighth grade. It would be, um, um, keeping five days at the K five with, um, the, um, trying to end the blended classroom structures by modifying the, um, the distance. I think to clarify Sheila's a little more with the idea as six is the preference of the district. However, five, maybe four would be all right, but would be preference in that we would get information on if that is achievable to be able to end that blend structure.
Correct.
Sheila, that, um, fair for me to modify?
Very much so. And, and, and to keep that information upfront, you know, as far as what we ended up going with, because I, I, I don't think the teachers want to make it any smaller than they possibly have to either. I mean, I think the teachers are looking out for the health and the welfare of the kids as well as themselves. And I, um, they definitely don't want to make it any closer than they possibly have to either.
Then one last thing I'd like to add in is further discussions about giving K five some virtual days in some way for mental health. Whether that be once a month or once every other week. We need more feedback and how that would look and play out in that space. But I do think that those, those levels need that time to be able to, because I, I, I'm, we're not going to, we're going to start losing people, I think. Not, I mean, just emotionally, and I just think that we need to give them, as Jen and I kept saying, we've been hoping for a fog day, right? Everyone to get some off, some time off.
Be careful what you wish for.
Right? It's okay. We could take a couple, Sheila. So, so just to be clear, back when we did our presentation, remember I mentioned that there are some things that we would have to negotiate. So if we did the one day a month, that would be a change to the calendar. And so we would negotiate that with MBEA and we would want to get that information out to you and out to families and that sort of thing. So, um, even with the decision tonight, there would be some work that we would have to do, um, to make that happen. But that would be a top priority to build in some of that, uh, flexibility for all of our teachers.
So then this would be fair, this is a continuing conversation. So this gives a, a general framework, but we know that it's going to have to be continuing conversations with these components because it's a lot pieces to move to be able to achieve that. So the idea would be more of, um, showing the board, showing the commu- our district in the community where the board's looking at trying to achieve, but it may not be feasible. Or there could be things that crop up that just, it won't necessarily pan out. But I think to, to give the district, um, that, that framework to work off of based on our conversations, I think, um, the more, the Sheila motion that she was providing and I'm seconding, um, is a fair place to start.
So Tim, I would just, I guess, offer or move that we amend the movement to take uh, lowering the social distance out of the, uh, middle school plan and to limit the K five social distancing to no less than four feet. And just like you mentioned earlier, three feet is just, I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Agreed.
I'll agree.
I would, I would agree with that. Would we, would there be a reason, Brandon, that you wouldn't be willing to do the middle school at four feet as well or five feet? And give them the little bit of flexibility, but not going to three? Or do you really want, do you want to keep it verma at the six with the middle school?
Yeah, my, my reasoning there is that I'm, I'm really not comfortable with it. I just, it, it seems to be that there is no other way to do, to do the elementary school and, and to keep our integrity and our word that we said we would do. There's about three different major factions right now going on. And there's, there's the people who are very risk adverse. And there's the people who want to get their kids back in the school. And then there's people who are very much concerned about the teachers. I want to try to find a way that we can satisfy all three of these factions, but I just don't know that is, is possible. And so this is the best bet I can come up with.
Darby, can you just comment on what that would look like if the middle school didn't have any flexibility with social distancing?
Yeah, um, I just shared that the teachers, um, certain hours would have to move to those larger locations. Cafeteria, gym, band, music room. And one piece of that, it's not really what I want to do because the teachers prefer to be in their own classrooms and have their technology there and they're comfortable with their whiteboards already set up. And, um, I mean, I'm just requesting that we get a little bit of flexibility there. Like the, I feel like the elementary is giving it four feet, the middle school shouldn't get four feet. It is going to be very minimal classrooms that I would have to actually, um, use those less feet. Because right now I can currently fit everybody in at this six feet. But I'm just asking within the next twelve weeks of the second trimester that I have some of that flexibility to work with some things. And I would be very transparent on whatever form of documentation we need to put together for that. But I really don't want to ask our teachers to have to move to a different location. I just think that adds on more stress around them.
I, I guess I would want to modify then. I, I think asking a teacher to move at this point in the game and kind of change everything that they've been doing. And asking a math teacher, an English teacher to go teach in a gym would be a total distraction. It would be, in my opinion, it would be terrible for the students. It's not even just how bad it would be for the teachers. I think the distraction for the students would be awful. And I, I do think if we're gonna, if we're gonna consider even four feet for the elementary school, considering keeping that within the middle school as well, I think would, would be fair to do. I agree. I don't want to get the kids closer than need be, but also listening to the parents saying that they need their kids back. And this is the only way, listening to the teachers saying that, you know, they need the, the blend to change and they need to be able to have maybe more of a straight line. I'm just, I'm thinking that to keep the teachers in their classrooms in the middle school, to consider going to, to four feet, especially if, or, you know, five or four, especially if Darby's willing to be transparent and basically all the administrators are willing to be transparent. I guess I would just kind of, to put that in there, that's kind of where I would, I would want to vote.
I, I would also, yeah.
Go ahead, Sheila.
That'd be true. Um, I think that is true. The middle schooler would be easier to ask to social distance, I mean, to keep their four feet apart than asking, you know, your little ones. I mean, if you can keep your little ones, then I would think that the middle school should be more able. And quite honestly, when they leave that school, they're not social distancing anyway. But I think it's important to enforce it in the school as much as possible. But I think it's important to enforce it in the school as much as possible and to explain it. And, but at some point, yeah, I think, you know, we got to relax it a little bit. I think it's more important emotionally and, and you should be, if we're upfront about it, then the parents who aren't comfortable with it can choose to go to the online.
So just to clarify what we're discussing, right? That would be no more blended at the K through two. Like there's not a single child, a single teacher that would have double prep?
So I, I wouldn't call it a double prep, but I did spend significant time on Friday with an entire grade level in one building that is begging me to keep their blended classrooms. So, and you have a letter from one of those teachers that I forwarded to you earlier today. So I'm not going to say there, there won't be any blended rosters because those four teachers have worked together very well and have a system that they love and they want to maintain that is unique for the majority of our teachers. The majority of our teachers do not want to do that. So we would definitely end the majority of the blended classrooms, but I cannot say that there would be no blended classrooms at the elementary level. We know we'll have blended classrooms at the secondary level.
Can I ask which group of teachers that is? Is that our Gannyard, K through?
It's Gannyard kindergarten.
Kindergarten?
Yep.
Thank you. And I mean, I agree with what everyone is saying. I'm sad that there's no other option because I do think that we're taking risks. And from a science perspective, those risks really worry me. I mean, I've said it already tonight. I think we are risking a much higher likelihood of an outbreak by doing this. And we, we all, I mean, we all the same. We all want to keep our schools open as, like, as, as much as possible. We want to, everyone to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. But it doesn't sound like there's, there's an option, right? To honor what we said and maintain that social distance to the six feet.
Tim, where are we at in the Roberts rules? My amendment, I don't know if you guys have seconded it or not, so.
So that, did you want to clarify with the middle school conversation, your amendment to the motion? Which would be the, what Amy was saying regarding the four foot to the middle school?
Yeah, so my motion was not to, to include that. Do we take out the lowering of the social distance from the middle school plan? Like I wish we could for, for the elementary plan. And no one's getting everything they want. I wish there was a way we could do it without lowering the elementary, but it sounds like there's just no other option there. But that's definitely where I'm comfortable drawing the line.
Okay, so just to clarify, so you're not going to modify your current motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there, there's the motion that Sheila did that we modify, that I clarified with some language that's the standing motion. Brandon has done a, an emotion to amend that emotion, which would be the lowering of the distance for the lower grades, which K through five. So is there a second for Brandon's motion?
Just to be clear, it would be to take out lowering social distance from the middle school and cap lowering social assistance in the K through twelve at four feet, like you mentioned earlier.
Correct. Because as everyone remembers, the, in this, the recommendation that was provided, removing or lowering the distance was part of that recommendation. So Brandon's clarifying that that would be removed from there. But then it would continue to be the four to five feet in the middle school, not down to the three feet.
No, I think Brendan said he wants to keep it at six foot in the middle school and allow it to go down to four foot in the elementaries. Am I correct, Brandon?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
So is there a second to that amended motion? So Brandon not seeing a second. Is there another amended motion that someone would like to bring forward to see if there would be a second? So Amy, do you want to do a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we limit four feet to DK through eighth grade. So all the other things stand that is in Sheila's motion and just having it limit to, no less than, than four feet and full transparency if possible.
Okay, so there is the second, there's the amendment to the emotion, the motion that Amy just provided. Is there a second to Amy's?
I'll second that.
So there is a second to that motion. So is there any discussion regarding Amy's motion to amend by the distance and Sheila's second?
Can I clarify that though we're going to change, though it's proposed that we change the distance, it's not, am I correct in understanding that it's not going to be utilized unless absolutely necessary? Like six foot will remain like the goal. Is that accurate, every, all administrators?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can speak for the building administrators. Whenever possible, we're going to maintain the six feet. We're just going to have to have some exceptions in some classrooms.
Courtney, would you like that added to the amendment?
I do.
I'd love it.
Okay, I mean, we, we could add, we could say that we would like it to be six foot whenever possible and no less than four foot at any given time.
I like this wording better, Sheila.
Okay.
I also wonder, I mean, in the sake of the transparency, can, can parents know before they send their kids to school on November sixteen, what the class size is going to be? I know that from communication, that's not ideal because that's a lot of moving pieces to communicate shortly. But I think the parents need to know what they're sending their kids to. They've already signed up, they're some already committed before knowing. That's a pretty big change for some families.
And we will do the, we will do the best that we can to communicate that. It is a shell game and it is constantly moving, right? Like, I think one of our administrators said today that they even, we're taking calls for new enrollments all the time. So, so it is very fluid, but we can certainly let parents know, you know, where, where the ranges are for class sizes and if they have a specific question. It's much easier at the elementary level than it is, obviously, the secondary level when they're in multiple classes, but we can work on that.
But I mean, I would like that added as much as we can, even though I understand that number is going to be fluid and keep changing.
So there is a motion for the amendment that's been modified and clarified. Sheila has supported that. We've had discussion. Deb, are you okay with this? Are you all right? Yeah. At least I'm just trying to keep up with all this. So I'm going to, we're going to have the vote. So Sheila, would you do roll call? This is just for the amendment.
Okay, Wielene Pangel?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Okay, Sheila Murphy? Yes.
So the amendment is approved. So now we go back to the motion of approving the recommendations as Sheila and I had talked previously with the attached amendment language to that. Is there any further questions from the board? Since the original motion and second are currently standing. Not hearing any questions. Sheila, roll call vote, please.
Wielene Pangel?
Yes.
Okay. Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Brandon McQueen?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy? Yes. Wow, I didn't see that one coming.
So motion is approved. It was a unanimous vote for all of those components. I'm looking for Deb, I lost her. I'm assuming Deb has everything at this point. I can help you if you need some help tomorrow.
She's nodding her head, yes. I just want to thank you all for taking so much time on that vote and really analyzing it. We definitely appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone on the team. I know it's a lot of work for administrators and the teachers and the community to pull a lot of this information together. And as we have mentioned, there is no perfect. We are just doing the best that we feel is the best for our students, weighing all of these factors. The next item on the agenda is the citizen's request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Is there anyone at this point who would like to address the board? If there is, please keep your comment short. We would like to be done before eleven o'clock at all.
So just to ask if there's any public attendee that would like to make comment to the board. If you can raise your virtual hand, I will unmute your microphone. And I'll give you a little bit more of an opportunity. If there are any public attendees that would like to make comment to the board this evening, you will raise your virtual hand, I will unmute your microphone.
No one is raising your hand.
So we will go on to the next item, which is any board education who wishes to discuss anything for the good of the order?
I'd just like to say, and I want to keep it really short, but I think for two reasons, we should just make every member of Congress watch this board meeting. One, just so they have to suffer for four or five hours, but two, so they can see what it looks like when there's a bunch of grownups in a room working together.
Thank you, Brandon. I would like to make two comments. One, it's exciting to know that homecoming still moved forward at, it's moving forward at the high school. That makes me feel very good. Two, on Saturday, a large group of people got together at Fancher Public, at Fancher School and planted fifteen very large trees that were a large project that was funded by the DTE Foundation and multiple organizations across the state and our new local tree. And I learned a lot about planting a tree, which I never knew. I'd like to thank the Michigan State Arborist, who is quite the expert. But it was a wonderful community event and the trees are beautiful. And I know Fancher's going to love that into the future. So thank you, everyone in the community who helped out on Saturday morning and did that. That was quite an experience. I hope we can have more of them across the district. And anyone else, anything else? Not hearing anyone, anything? Thank you, everyone, for sticking this out this long. I appreciate all the work and the time that we put into this. It's an important time in our community. That being said, I will call the meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you all, have a good night.